Good morning. This is June 9 at 8:31 a.m. We are beginning our council retreat. Long awaited, and this is the day from 8:30 to noon. So we'll begin with open public comment. Kathleen Otto.
Yes, so if there's any community members who have joined us online this morning and would like to provide public testimony on the specific agenda items, please hit star three on your phone or click the raise hand button on your computer screen. You'll have three minutes to provide any comments. Looks like there are no hands raised. So the next agenda item this morning is Finance 101 and Financial Policy Overview. Our Budget Director Emily Swetzik will be presenting as well as the Finance Director, Mark Gasaway, and Deputy Treasurer Sarah Lowe. Okay, before we get started on that, it looks like somebody did just call in and raise their hand. So we're going to pause just for a second. So caller, when you're unmuted, please state your name, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, can you hear me? Thank you. Hey, my name's Heather Carroll. I used to be a contract indigent defense attorney in Clark County. I just wanted to encourage the council to use part of their retreat to think about indigent defense in Clark County. As I'm sure most of you know, most counties in sizable counties in Washington have an indigent defense system. Many of the smaller counties, including Douglas County, are moving to a public defender office. This is a good time for the county to make changes to its system. It has a lot of ARPA money available for startup costs. It's in the middle of a space planning, a space needs assessment, so it could locate an office somewhere. Additionally, it's looking at the public safety tax, which will bring in, as I think the assessments have shown, more money than would be needed for body cameras. So that would be a funding source for ongoing costs. I think traditionally, the council has been opposed to a public defender system, an in-house county employee public defender system, because it perceives those costs to be prohibitive. The funding for indigent defense has been going up year over year, and I would encourage the county to at least ask staff to prepare some budget comparisons so that it could look at what funding for, you know, and no one has proposed a funding, a public defender system that would take over the entire representation. The model has always been establishing a public defender office that would take over half of the felony cases. It would ensure stability. This is a very tight job market. You know, counties across the state, including King County, are having difficulty recruiting and retaining experienced public defenders. This county offers no benefits, lower pay.
A minute remaining.
Contractors are not eligible for public service loan forgiveness. So I'd encourage the county to, as part of its planning process and retreat, to think about, you know, whether this is a good time, I think it is, to, you know, create some kind of stable system to match the rest of the state and ensure, you know, that they are using the tax dollars to increase the quality of the representation in Clark County. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll hand over to Emily. I think you're going to start this presentation off. Thanks.
Good morning. Thanks, Kathleen. Good morning, council. We're excited today to come and share a presentation that we prepared for a recent human resources training, management and mentor training. So that's the date on the bottom. I didn't get a chance to change that for today. But today, we are just going to give you a basic overview of, we call it Finance 101, and it's some big picture information about funds and information about financial policies. And this may be familiar to most of you, but maybe a good reminder, and it could have some new information, and definitely for those that are new and haven't seen this before, I'm sure it will be interesting. Please feel free to let us know as you have questions as we go through it, and we'll get started. So ready for the next slide. So today, we're just going to do some welcome and introductions. I know you all know us, but we'll go over our roles and responsibilities a little bit. We'll talk about financial policies and what we're doing with those, some specific policy updates. And then Mark has a good presentation about the big overview of financial policies and funds, and then, of course, questions and answers. Next slide, please. So keep going. We're going to go into welcome introductions. And these are your presenters today, and I will hand it off to Mark and Sarah to introduce themselves.
It's me, me. Well, like Emily said, you know, most of us already, but maybe for Council Rylander, you know, this will be some good information. It's new information. So I'm Mark Gasaway, the Finance Director, and I work under the direction of the elected county auditor. He has the responsibility for financial services throughout the county. So we not only, we're not just the auditor's office, but we're countywide. So we have the responsibility for all the processing of transactions. So every transaction that goes through the county, whether it's a payable or receivable or, you know, anything that we're, you know, processing, we have that responsibility. Also, we are responsible for the accounting of those things, making sure that they're properly recorded in the right funds. We have, once the budget is set, we have budget limitations that'll allow us to track expenditures to make sure we don't exceed the budget. And so we also, once we have all of that information accumulated, we also are responsible for financial reporting. So the annual financial report for the county, we prepare that. We work with the state auditors to make sure that everything is audited correctly. So that's kind of our responsibility. As you're going to hear from both Emily and Sarah, we also are part, I'm also part of the finance team, which we're an advisory group to our county manager for things financial, which if you think about it, just about everything we do in the county has a financial impact. So we advise Kathleen on financial impacts that certain decisions may have. So I think that's a good enough introduction. So on to Sarah.
Good morning, councilors, and thanks for stalling for me, Mark. I really appreciate it. I apologize for joining late. I'm at a treasurer's conference. My name is Sarah Lowe. I'm the Chief Deputy Treasurer in the Clark County Treasurer's Office, and I oversee the tax collection activities as well as all of our cash management and banking activities for 40 special purpose districts and investments and related debt. I think we'll get into a little bit more of our office operations in a later slide, but I'm happy to be here this morning and talk to you about financial policies.
Thanks, Sarah. And as you guys know, I'm Emily Swetzik, the Budget Director. And Rebecca, if you could switch to the next slide. This does go into, one more, into the financial roles and responsibilities. And Mark kind of led into this. There must be some repeat in some of our comments here. But, you know, we're the finance team, and as Mark said, we work very closely with Kathleen. We've been meeting weekly since the pandemic ensued. Prior to that, we used to meet like monthly, but as Mark said, everything seems to have a financial impact, and it seems like there's a lot more to talk about lately. So we do continue to meet weekly, except for when there's vacations and things like that. And we provide input to the county manager about any financial project that she's having to grapple with or advise you, the council, on. And there's oftentimes, and very, very often, we pull in other other resources like the HR director or legal or other subject experts to help us, you know, grapple with the problems and make recommendations for the county manager. Next slide, please. And then, as Mark started talking about the role of the auditor's office, this is just a slide that specifically focuses on their office. Mark, is there anything else you'd like to add?
You know, I don't think there's anything to add. I guess sometimes it's difficult for people to understand that we really have, you know, different roles. You know, as a Finance Director, I have one role. Emily has a role, you know, focused around budget. Sarah has a role focused around cash management. And so asking the right person the right question can sometimes be a little bit tricky, right? And you could start with, you know, any of the three of us. We talk daily. So if, you know, you have a question on something and we don't know the answer or we need to redirect it to one of the other members, we're happy to do that. And we would much rather be asked and be able to provide input than, you know, leave you kind of hanging out there wondering, you know, what's going on. We, you know, we hope that this is kind of a two-way communication process, so.
Madam Chair, I have a question. I don't know if we can freely talk, discuss, ask questions. What's the format here?
Yes, go ahead. I think, I mean, that's fine with the finance team, if that's fine with the council.
Yeah, absolutely.
So just a couple of quick points and maybe points for discussion. Number one, between Emily and Mark, I mean, and Sarah as well, what a great team. You've always been extremely responsive to me in answering all my questions or preparing some research for us. The first point I want to make is, thank you. You're very highly professional and responsive. Secondarily, for the public, you don't work for us. We don't have staff on the council, and which draws me to a related issue. You know, we've had an economic policy advisor somewhat like Lindsay, but based on economic development vacant for my entire time on the council so far. And that would be a great help if we could add that back into our staffing issue discussion. And then the related topic that it kind of came up as I'm digging into some of the emails I missed, and I still have hundreds more to go while I was on vacation. There was some discussion, Mark, and I sent you an email about it regarding that public safety tax proposal. We're going to put on the ballot, which is certainly not an assured thing. But for the very first time, I saw some reference to the cities potentially losing revenue as a result of the 10th of a cent. And I saw your explanation, and I just simply didn't understand it at all. Not because your explanation wasn't adequate. It was because of my, you know, it just hit me off the cuff for the first time, and I don't understand the detail of it or how that could possibly be with the 60-40 split. So I'm wondering, any comments to any of those points?
Yeah, I can absolutely go over that with you, council. I saw your email this morning as well. I just got back in town, and I didn't get it yesterday. I was flying home, so I picked it up this morning. So after we get done, maybe this afternoon, I can explain that. I think I've gone through that with Chair Bowerman, and she understands what that is in reference to, but I'm happy to explain that to you, so.
Well, for the public, does it exist or not exist? Are the cities going to lose revenue or?
Well, and I believe what you're referring to is the difference between the public safety sales tax and were they able to issue a 1/10 on their own? I think that's what the question is.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Medveji, I think it, just in light of the conversation and the presentation this morning, if the group, the finance team can continue with this presentation and will make note of it, and if there's specific questions at the end, then we can help address that just to make sure we're flowing in a systematic way this morning, if that works.
All right, so we're back to Sarah to kind of talk a little bit more about the Treasurer's Office role.
So the Treasurer's Office actually has a pretty broad role in the county in terms of serving all of the taxing districts. But specific to Clark County, as you know, we do report to an elected official. We are responsible for collecting about $795 million in property taxes, and we have a very high collection rate, 99% overall. We also handle the important collection of our real estate excise tax. So any transfer of property or home sale that occurs in the county, our office is in the middle of that. So we do help in assisting forecasting the REIT I and REIT II revenues because those are directly related, obviously, to those collections. We also process all of the banking and cash activity for the county as well as for all the special purpose districts, and that includes about $9.6 billion in transactions annually. So there's a lot of money flowing through our offices and working with payroll. That's where Mark talked a lot about cash flows. We do assist with providing information on cash flows. Traditionally, in the past, we've had some issues with the general fund cash flow around some of our low points. As you know, our high collection times would be property tax April and October. So we used to have some issues around the February-March timeframe. Those have abated due to ARPA and our stronger revenue collections. We also are responsible for managing the county's investment pool. Clark County is actually over 30% of our $1.2 billion investment pool. So all of your funds are invested locally and held in the care of the treasurer and earning interest. And I'll talk a little bit about that more later. And then lastly, we're responsible for managing the county's debt portfolio. What that means is we assist the council in the coordination of issuing the debt and managing that process through the life of the debt. We also do assist the special purpose districts with managing their debt as well. And that portfolio is about $1.4 billion, of which $66 million is related to the county. So we're a very small team. I would call us the small cog, the wheel that's spinning really, really fast because we have daily transactional responsibilities with respect to cash and investments.
Thanks, Sarah. And the Budget Office is all things budget. So our daily activities and our staff, we revolve around facilitating the budget process. And for some, it feels like the budget process happens at certain portions of the year, but it really is a year-long effort to get everything ready for the process, get the process started, and take all the information from the departments and create the baseline, and then work with the county manager and the council towards adoption. We work very closely with departments. We've already had several meetings with them gearing up towards our 2023 budget process this year. And our goal is to really be open and transparent and provide solid foundational data, good for decision-making, and help the county manager and the council adopt a balanced budget every year. Next slide, please. And one more. So we're going to go over just a really brief conversation about financial policies. And I know it's something that we all understand, but they are considered a best practice, and that's put there based on some conversations and some data that we get from GFOA, which is one of our main associations that we refer to for how things are done in county government and in the financial side of things. But the finance team has been working on financial policies since I've been a part of the Budget Office. And our goal is to really have good, sound financial policies for everything, including, Sarah will go into some of the debt and things that Treasurer's Office handles. We've been able to implement some fund balance, minimum fund balance policies for our major funds, and that is an ongoing effort. There's a lot more to do with that. But what we've done is we've started to get a webpage developed on our ClarkNet so that these financial policies are accessible to all of the county staff. And then we're also going to be working on an out-facing website, financial policy page for the county website. If you could switch to the next slide, Rebecca. There's just a snapshot or two of the actual ClarkNet page. So I don't know if you guys use the ClarkNet page very, very often, but it's something that we as staff and internal staff communicate a lot through. And when you go to ClarkNet, there's a menu at the top that says Policies. It's there in a small red box. If you click on that on there, there's a till button to the right-hand side that says Financial Policies. And it takes you to this page where we're really trying to get everything there for what I call some one-stop shopping, so that if anybody has a question about, you know, the debt policy or the auditor's office policies on different types of things or on the financial policies for fund, minimum fund balances, they can go out there and see those. There's also a lot of resources about best practices. So other departments like Public Health or Community Services, if anybody would want some information about best practices on what policies they need to develop for their departments, we will definitely have some good resources out there if they need it. But it's in the brand-new stages. It's very beginning, so there's a lot more to come in the near future. Next slide, please. I'm handed over to Sarah for her updates.
So in addition to the Clark County Council's financial and budgetary authorities, there is also this committee that exists in statute, the Clark County Finance Committee. And this committee consists of the county treasurer as the chair, the county auditor, and then the county council chair as well. And this team is responsible for approving the county's debt policy as well as the county's investment policy. This team does meet quarterly, and the meetings are open to the public. They're actually fairly interesting meetings where we have really robust discussions about, you know, our investment pool and how it's being managed, as well as discussions about policy related to both investments and debt. I appreciate Chair Bowerman's attendance on that committee, and I'm hoping she finds it as exciting as I do. This just is an important committee, though, that does exist within the county's financial structure. So it's just good to take note of it. Some people find it interesting, too, because it's three independent electeds setting the policy for how the county council is going to issue debt. And so, you know, they do have influence essentially on the framework through which debt is issued. If you want to join us, though, we meet quarterly, and those meetings are listed on our website, so you're free to join. Okay, the debt policy. This is actually incredibly timely that I'm getting to the opportunity to talk to you about the debt policy. We recently updated it in February of 2022, and we did receive a statewide accreditation for our debt policy. And actually, on June 21st, I'm going to be coming before you with the resolution to approve a refinancing of our debt for a cost savings opportunity. And we will be briefing you, but the context through which we will be asking for that refi is within our debt policy. So the purpose really of our debt policy is just to ensure that our debt is being issued and managed in a cost-effective manner, and that it matches with our long-term financial plans that we're going to be able to have the revenues to pay for any debt we would issue today or into the future. It also establishes roles and responsibilities. I think it was mentioned by Councillor Medveji. The county actually does also have a financial advisor. This is an independent financial advisor that can, you know, come to the council and provide advice on, you know, many matters of finance, whether that be debt, revenue measures. When 179th was going on, they were called in to provide analysis. The county also has a bond council. So that's actually the legal entity that provides us advice in that specialty area of law. And for us right now, that is Foster Garvey. It also talks about in the debt policy, just the eligible types of debt we can enter into. And, you know, Kathleen, I know we've had discussions in the past about all debt must be approved by the county council in advance of issuance, and that means all debt. That's state loans and grants. That's any kind of inter-fund loan that may need to be taken out, and that's also public offerings. So it's really important that we, as a finance team, train folks in the county that the council is the authority for allowing debt to occur in the county. So that's really something we've tried to stress. And this debt policy really focuses on that, but also talks about the eligible types of debt instruments that exist. There's also post-issuance compliance that exists for any type of debt. And it's really important that we do follow through with all of that reporting. Otherwise, it could negatively impact us into the future if we were to try to issue debt. The county has an incredibly strong credit rating of AA2, and so we want to try to preserve that at all costs and have an unblemished record in terms of how the market sees us. I did already talk about the types of debt we can issue. We can federal and state loans, inter-fund loans, general obligation. The Treasurer's Office is really, you know, your point of contact if you have questions about the county's debt portfolio. We do have a really extensive website. There's the public side, the Intranet site, and there's the Internet site where we have just all the details about, you know, the county's debt, our policy, how we manage it, and so on. So feel free to look out there if you have questions as well. Does anyone have anything on debt, questions about it? I know this is going to be a topic in the next two weeks, so I'll probably be seeing you here soon, but. Nothing? Okay, cool. So the next policy that the Finance Committee is responsible for is the investment policy. The Clark County Treasurer's Office is actually one of only 12 treasurer's offices across the state that have a combined investment pool for local governments within our county to participate in. We invest every single dollar that is not needed for immediate expenditure. So it's really important that we have a lot of oversight on this pool and that we have a well-structured investment policy. And so everything that we do, we use the policy to manage. Our policy is reviewed annually. We recently had a policy review on May 17th that was very lively. There was lots of good discussions about the different metrics for managing the pool. The purpose of this policy really is just to set the investment. The number-one investment for our pool is safety, so preservation of capital is the number one. Then liquidity, so that we have cash available for expenditures. And then last is yield, right? That's earnings. So we do prioritize in that order. It also talks about just the delegation of authority, who can sort of do what, who has what roles, the different instruments. We can only invest in incredibly high-quality instruments. And then we also have a discussion about internal controls and reporting requirements. So there are a lot of reporting requirements associated with having the pool. We do report everything in Workday, and again, we do have quarterly investment meetings with all the participants and county departments so they can learn about how their investments are going. We also do a really in-depth economic update at those quarterly meetings. So it is a good opportunity just to hear from the county's economist about, because we do work with a financial and independent investment advisor, and they go really in-depth about what's happening in the marketplace and what they expect to see going forward in the next six months to a year and help us determine our strategy. So again, we have information about that on our website, both internally and externally, and I'm available to answer any questions about that.
Sarah, just a comment. One of the things that, being new to this Finance Committee, that has really impressed me is that it is not a rubber stamp operation at all. You get questions and comments and even a little bit of backtalk, wouldn't you say? And when you do, you take it in stride and use it as an opportunity for dialogue with the committee, and you do a terrific job of that. And that's, I think, very important because if it were, if it were different, if it were a rubber stamp operation, it wouldn't have the meaning that you give it now, and thank you for that.
I have one question. It says the next review is May 17th. Must be an old slide. I'm just curious what the next review date is.
Yes, I do apologize. This presentation was actually used for a countywide training, and we did have that review on May 17th, and the policy was approved at that time in our quarterly meeting. So thank you for that. That date should have just been stricken. We had a, that was our meeting date. My apologies.
Thank you, Sarah. Can we go to the next slide, Rebecca? So now we're going to go to Mark Gasaway for an overview of building a financial foundation in the county.
Thanks, Emily. Just like Sarah, I want to reiterate that all of these policies that we're talking about, these are, these are not auditor office policies or treasurer office policies. These are county policies. They're really your policy. These are county policies. They're really your policies, counsel. Every policy that we have has to go to you for approval. So this kind of outlines a a historical perspective of some adoption of fiscal policies that we follow. Um and and maybe some of them live, you know, the debt policy kind of lives in the treasurer's office and some of the business expense policies live in the auditor's office, but they really are county policies. They really are your policies. And you can see that that a lot of these originated some time ago. Uh they have been updated. We continually revise them to make sure that they are, you know, contemporary with where we're at today. So if you could go to the next slide. So this is um and and maybe Emily could tell you a little bit more about this. This is the the site that we're trying to construct that would have all of these policies in a single place. Uh you can see that the financial reports, this is a slide that shows where the financial reports are located. But we're trying to have a a a site that says, okay, here's where the policies are. And you can go to the auditor's office page for this policy or the treasurer's office page for this policy. To find the fiscal policy plan, they're published every year in our financial transmonitoring report. So uh you see the little box there that's that's highlighted and red. Uh anytime you want to look at the sixteen major policies, they're republished every year. Uh sometimes we may ask to have those updated as well. So this is one place that you can find them at any time. So next slide. And then I'm just going to uh talk about some policies that we are following. And and this is we're we're starting into the budget season, and uh these policies specifically reference the budget process, the things that we need to consider from a big picture point of view. Uh Emily, of course, as she puts that budget together, we're we're always trying to make sure that we're following, you know, specific policies. And I think the best way to to think of these policies, they're they're like sideboards. So we have um, you know, some room in between, some flexibility to do some things. But these are really the sideboards that the council has given staff to make sure that a a budget is being constructed or transactions are being processed uh in the appropriate manner or in a manner that they would, that you would have us do this. So um I I don't know that we need to read through these, but certainly, you know, these are um available at any time. Um, you know, I'll just point out a few things, you know, when we do uh revenue forecasts and expenditure forecast, things like that, it's simply because of the policies, not not simply because of policy. It's good, it's best practice, right? It's best practice that we do those things, but it is part of our policy that we're doing these things. Um, you know, Emily referenced policy four, you know, if we're going to accept state and federal money for programs, you know, we have to make sure that uh we're able to uh sustain those programs as we go along. Maybe we go to the next slide. Here you can, it it, you know, policy eight talks about the appropriate um uh maintenance for capital facilities and equipment to make sure that we're taking care of our assets properly. Policy nine, I want to point out simply because this talks about uh our reserves. We have reserves not only in our in our um general fund, but there are reserves in other funds throughout the county. Uh and and that's part of, part of good, you know, best practice in how we manage the county. We want to make sure that whatever programs that we have are sustainable, regardless of whether we have, you know, an economic issue or, uh you know. And and let's all, you know, be real here. Two years ago, when we started in the you know, the COVID world, we had no idea what we were facing. It was unprecedented. Uh but thankfully, we'd followed our policies and we had some flexibility built into those funds to make sure that we were able to um continue our operations, uh which I, you know, coming out of the the two years of COVID, I think we are are, I I mean, as a county, I think we should be proud of the way we've come out of it. Uh we've come out of it strong. We've followed our policies. We've been able to um, you know, fund our operations. So next slide. Uh and again, you know, these re- these refer to, uh, you know, uh one of our 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 newest efforts trying to look at our, you know, capital budget, um making sure that we're um, you know, following our our capital improvement policy. So um I don't know if you have any questions on these, you know, counsel, they really are your policies and I don't know if if any thoughts or questions, any anything that we can answer. All right. I guess none. All right. Here we go. So I'm going to give an overview of some of our major funds. And for some of you, this will be some review. Uh it is an updated version because I have the twenty twenty one numbers on here. We have um over a hundred funds at the county. Uh and eighty of those I would consider operating funds. In other words, they have transactions in them. Some of the other funds we have are for, you know, accounting processing purposes. The one that we hear the most about is our general fund. Uh it is the most flexible funding that we have at the county, and we have a lot of the operations uh in the county running through the general fund. And here's an example. This is just an example of some of those. You, we have the the Clark County Sheriff's Office, all of our courts, our administrative offices like the assessor, treasurer and auditor and are in the general fund, our um support um departments like the IT uh group. Uh so there's a lot of effort put into how the general fund money is budgeted and spent because it it has to cover a lot of things. Uh in twenty twenty one, you can see that our revenue was slightly lower than expenditures. This is a little bit. Um, you know, you may want to know, well, how did that happen? Uh we had a lot of um funding that we transferred out in twenty twenty one uh to help support other funds. And that that shows up as an expenditure. Anytime you have an outflow, it shows up as an expenditure. So uh it looks like we had a, you know, a five million dollar decrease. But again, some of that funding we transferred to public health or to our um general liability fund. We also sent some funding to our capital um maintenance fund to help support those. The the revenue sources, i- it's very interesting. The the major revenue sources, of course, property tax and sales tax, you know, I I'm I'm amazed to see fifty four million dollars in sales tax coming in. Uh at the beginning of the COVID, we had no idea what was going to happen to sales tax, but it's come, it's it's remained strong. And it's and it's uh even uh even this year, we're, you know, about a ten percent increase, twelve, ten or twelve percent increase over the prior year. So sales tax has been much stronger than anyone anticipated. There's several factors for that. I think we've talked about, you know, um the fact that people are shopping from home and we're a destination based sales tax state. Uh all those things are are attributing to that sales tax number. But you can see there's other things as well, license and fees, goods and services. We have three hundred revenue distinct revenue sources in in that general fund. So I have a list, uh, you know, a a eleven by fourteen page, five pages of revenues that we review. So um expenditures, salaries and benefits. Clearly, we are a service provider, which requires staff. Yeah.
Mark, yes, Council Rinder has a question.
Just a question.
Oh, yeah, just jump in anytime.
I don't remember which year it was, but Washington State started requiring uh the collection of sales tax on internet sales from out of state.
Yes.
I don't remember what year it was, but I'm curious, has that had a significant impact on the revenue from sales tax?
Yes, absolutely. That was about five years ago, counselor, and and good point. That was the way fair decision. We have been a beneficiary, no doubt. No doubt, we have been a beneficiary of that. A- and I'll use this just as an example. Five years ago, Amazon wasn't even in our top ten of sales tax um providers. Now they're in our top three. So it it's just made a whole lot of difference, um particularly as people have, like I said, learned to shop from home, you know, home delivery, all of that. So and and that's been about five years. So
And I also want to add, um and I know Mark just talked about our sales tax and the increase that we've seen both this year and last year. Um the Budget Office and the Auditor's Office are currently looking at our general fund and updating that. Um and we'll be coming back to counsel to true that up for this year. Um and then there also the finance team as well, we're looking at the six year forecast. Um if the increase in sales tax revenues continue at the rate that they are, it will potentially change the conversation on our structural deficit in the general fund. It's still a little too early to share any specific numbers. It's a two month lag before we get the actual numbers from the state. Um but there will be more information coming to council soon and our conversations on how to move forward. And I also wanted to say, you know, even if it's going to change or potentially change that conversation on our structural deficit. Just as a reminder, there's a lot of things that we haven't done in the county because we've been in the structural deficit for years, um like our IT, our maintenance and other capital projects. So it's going to be a holistic conversation on one, the increased revenue that we're receiving, but also um it doesn't mean that, you know, we're going to be flush with a lot of money because there's a lot of things that we haven't done, but now it's going to cost us more money because we've deferred it. So just wanted to put that information out there.
And and I might also add that while we have seen, you know, property taxes are somewhat predictable, we know what ha- is going to happen with property tax. Sales tax has been quite a big wild card. We we didn't know it was going to happen, and it has a lot of volatility. I know that I was here during the Great Recession, and we saw declines in sales taxes, unprecedented numbers. So but one third of our revenue in the general fund are from other sources. And over the last few years, not only have those other sources not grown, but we have seen declines in those. So a lot of times, you know, the good news is is sales tax. But the bad news is is we're losing revenue in other areas. And, you know, an example of this would be um what we've had to do with our jail bed days. And we used to have significant revenue coming in from cities or from the Department of Corrections because of the jail bed days, but now that uh revenue has, you know, is one third of what it used to be. So again, we have good news and we have other news, right? And we need to balance that out. So as we go through it, and I I I love count Kathleen's comment of a holistic approach, we can't just look at a single revenue source and say, hey, we're doing great. Well, when in this fund, it's not a single revenue source. It's actually many revenue sources. Some are not doing as well as others, but we've been able to, you know, make up some of those, some of those numbers because of sales tax. Uh I did want to point out again, talking about, um, you know, we are a service provider. Salaries and benefits is our our biggest um expense, um, you know, people. Uh we do, you know, have a small amount of supplies and services, and a lot of those are contract services. We don't always hire staff to perform all the services in the general fund. A lot of those um services that we provide are contract services. Uh, you know, someone spoke earlier about indigent defense. Indigent defense is a significant service that we provide out of the general fund. So I I want to point that out, that even it's though it says supplies and services, some of those, in fact, a lot of that is contract services that we're providing um through through contracts. So questions on this one? Sorry.
In marketing, just in general, and correct me, I I assume what I'm about to say is correct. And that in this upcoming budget process that you will be sort of looking at the future, you'll be looking at the economics, you'll be looking at inflation and those various factors. I I'm just presuming that's the case because given the rate of inflation these last two years, uh increase in interest rates, the impact on housing, you know, there's some, I think, general concerns about the potential for another downturn cycle. And so I'm a I'm a huge fan of working strategically, looking down the path, trying to anticipate things that may happen and defining at least your first and second steps if that came to be.
Yeah, that's part of the six year forecast um that we do for a couple of our major funds, including general funds. So you'll actually see what the escalation uh recommendation is out for six years based on historical trends and based on what we know today and what economists are saying in the future. So that is, that's what we're working on right now, and the finance team is working on that to solidify. And it's broken out by different main main types of revenues and main types of um expenditures. And then it talks about what our availability is or how much we have above our minimum fund balance per policy. So yes, that is all part of the budget process, and it it has started now, and that will be presented to the council um in a couple settings.
I I'm just really concerned about all of this inflation the last couple of years and even I understand the projections now it's going to continue through the balance of this year at significant rates and levels. And if there's been deferred maintenance uh maintenance efforts put off trying to deal with lack of funds and we enter into this, you know, you have less real real value of money to spend on top of things that are. So I'm just concerned there could be some potholes here in front of us.
And and the good news is, counselor, that as a finance team, we, you know, we're always listening. We may get different perspectives on things. We get a chance to talk about those together. You know, all of us are are trying to be aware of the economic conditions, so we get three different opinions on that as well as input from other people. So it's, it actually works out quite well. Um the the process, I believe. And and I know a lot of that gets funneled into Emily, and and she has to digest it and and prepare it, but, uh, you know, neither Sarah nor I and or, you know, Kathleen, we're we're not shy about providing input. So um I just wanted to point out one thing, uh and Kathleen um mentioned this. We do have a a fund balance policy for our general fund. The twenty twenty one target is uh thirty point three million. And that reserve policy takes into consideration various things, including the amount of funding that we need for just operations because we do have fluctuations in cash flow throughout the year. We have uh emergency reserves set aside for economic conditions. Uh so there's, there's again, the county's fund balance policy for the general fund is one that we took, we took a lot of time on. We wanted to make sure that we got this right. I feel very comfortable with where we're at. We've been able to uh maintain our fund balance um appropriately throughout the COVID years. Uh and we actually have some, I, you know, funds available to do other things because of that, the policies that's in place. So any questions on the general fund before I move on?
Yes, Mark, you mentioned indigent defense a moment ago. And that reminded me, when we were talking about the public safety sales tax, um one of the things that you commented on, and I appreciate your repeating that here. Some people have asked us, why is there a sixty forty split where the county gets more than the cities get in the division of the funds from the public safety sales tax? And you commented on how there are certain um services that are provided by the county for the benefit of the county as a whole, of course, and the cities therein, um which makes that split be understandable. So what are some of those things? I think indigent defense was one, but if you expand that, I I find it pretty interesting.
Sure. So on the law and justice side, everything that we do other than patrol deputies is is a countywide or a regional program. So all of your courts, all of your corrections, all of your your jail, all of, you know, the juvenile detention, all of those things are regional services. They're not just unincorporated Clark County. So when you think, some people think, well, we have the sheriff's office. Well, the sheriff's office has many components, right? Other than the road deputies, which are primarily unincorporated Clark County, everything else is a regional service. In addition to those regional services, we provide the health department. We provide the administrative offices, the auditor is a countywide service. The treasurer's office is a countywide service. Um even the departments like um Emily's department, the budget office, she budgets for the whole county. So these types of things are countywide. You know, when we do an election, it's not for just the city of Vancouver or the unincorporated area. So my understanding of this particular sales tax, the statutes that are the RCW, excuse me, the way it was written, was to provide counties an opportunity to to receive revenue to help cover those regional type services. I I I I hope that's consistent with my prior explanation, but
Absolutely, it is. And Absolutely, it is. And I think that's an excellent answer to the question of why is there, as some say, just a 60-40 split for the cities? Therein is, is a large part of the answer.
Yep. And, and interestingly enough, and I, I think I put this in the email that I sent out to council, the, the language for that particular RCW has actually changed because it does not make reference just to public safety anymore. It talks about, and, and maybe the reason why they have one-third going to criminal justice, which is another term, a different term, and two-thirds being available, available for general use. It's an interesting, you know, an interesting dynamic that the legislature probably saw the need for this broader use of these funds. So I, I wasn't in the discussion, but that's my, my thought on it. So any question on general fund or fund balance?
I do.
The general fund?
If I may?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. No, just jump right in. This is, this is dialogue. We're not, you know, we're not in a hearing or anything, so.
I'm not so sure of that, but, but I'm happy to, because I, I think that's what the benefit of this day is supposed to be is to address future issues that we wish to deal with during the year. One of those topics that you've hit on and, and I do want to touch on what Counselor Bowerman just raised again. You know, I had been tilting for the last few years on the sales tax leakage issue. And it really, over the years, was starting to become better known due to your efforts in forecasting and trying to give us your best estimates on, on the amount of money we have lost over decades because of our proximity to a sales tax-free location. It's the worst in the country. So that was starting to become really understood as to how it was really impacting our general fund and preventing things like being able to easily fund a public defender's office and higher salaries for the sheriff's department, things that we all care about. Now, in the context of where we're at today, you know, we've seen sales tax kind of go through the roof as a result of online shopping and that now being taxed over the last five years, as you stated. And I think I have looked and I cannot find any work. And I know it's very, I brought it up with you before, it's very problematic to try to forecast in this context, what is happening during the pandemic and people doing more online, online shopping. You know, sales tax is a pretty predictable source of income until it wasn't. And it, right now it's not. And whether that's going to completely drop off, we don't know. So, you know, during this time, as far as I can tell, there's no model to try to estimate what we are losing. Although we may have got, gained 40% in sales tax, would we have gotten 60%, you know, if we didn't have sales tax leakage still? So that's a discussion that kind of is paused right now until we get through the turbulence of the pandemic and its impacts on our sales tax leakage. But as related to the public defense, you know, a lot of, we get a lot of comments from the public, just solve it with ARPA. We have ARPA Monday money, let's solve it. Well, of course it doesn't. There's only some things that ARPA can help with. And sustainability is the hallmark of being able to fund something like a public defender's office. The caller that called in earlier, I just have to tell you, I agreed 100% with everything she stated. And whereas ARPA money can't solve all issues, it can be a catalyst to get over the hump, if you will, to establish what we should have, a public defender's office. Because just if you know the details of how public defense works, a public defender's office is key and central to being a single source, primary source to getting substantive improvement in indigent defense. Ultimately, once established, it should be very cost efficient. It should save the county money ultimately, once we're able to establish that office. We should be talking about it right now, as that caller suggested. It is the right time to do so. You know, we'll always have conflict council contracts that'll provide a substantial cost to the county. We'll always have a private bar that's involved in providing defense as well. But if you have any comment on where we're at, on our ability to forecast what we're still losing on a sales tax revenue because of leakage, that would be great. And I'm hoping that at some point, we really can substantively, right now, see how can ARPA money help establish a public defense office that would ultimately provide cost savings to the county.
Mark, before you join or answer Counselor Mevage's question, I do want to just let the council know that Amber is actually reviewing the work that the previous employees had done with regards to a public defender's office and also looking at all options. Because, you know, not, it may not work specifically for the county, but that review is happening right now and will be coming back before council in the future. So that work is being done by Amber right now, just to look at that holistically. I know the one thing I always caution with ARPA funding, it's one time. So it does not, it's not a sustainable revenue stream that we can rely on to run programs. And then like I also said, with the, with our increase in sales tax we're seeing, there's still a lot of operational capital items that we need to take into consideration as well as we look at, again, everything holistically and what is sustainable, like Counselor Mevage said.
Yeah, thanks, Kathleen. So what I will do, Counselor Mevage, I don't know that I have updated any, I haven't looked at sales tax leakage probably for a year or better. I don't remember the last time we looked at it. But it would be very interesting to see, compare the 2021 sales tax per capita numbers to what they were previously. So I'll, I made a note here, I'm making notes to update that and, and I'll, I'll provide that out to council here in the next couple of weeks. Certainly for you to have, you know, for information basis. And, you know, as far as some of the other things, you know, I was at a conference this week and a lot of good ideas, right? You know, I usually go to these conferences looking for ideas. What are other counties, what are other cities doing? And one of the things that I think that would be really good for Clark County to look at, you know, looking at a, you know, a strategic plan. We, we, we kind of have an idea of what we're doing, but we really haven't, you know, spent as much time, you know, in a, in a strategic plan like you're suggesting, we, we could include things. Well, you know, public defender's office, what, what, what is the council's priorities, things like that? So that, you know, that's something, and, you know, we haven't had a chance to talk about this as a finance team yet. But it would be really, you know, helpful for us because then we can help focus our direction as well. You know, where, where, where can we best focus our work, so. All right, I'm going to go on a couple of other major funds real quickly. If you go to the next slide, please. Okay, the road fund. Now, the reason why I, I have the road fund up here, again, it's probably our second largest fund. But what I want to point out here is the difference in funding and expenditures. When we were looking at the general fund, 300 different revenue sources. The, the road fund primarily property taxes and fuel tax. So that's where, that's where you're getting your revenue for the road fund. Not 300, maybe a half a dozen. And then the, the other thing I wanted to point out is they have two major spending categories. They have operations or ongoing projects that they're working on, and then they have capital expenditures. Now, 2021 is a little bit of anomaly. Their capital expenditures were, were significantly lower than where they typically are at. Most years, you'll see that capital expenditure number in, you know, 25 million or maybe 30 million. So I know that they're gearing up to try and, you know, get some projects started. I know 179th Street has been a big effort to try and get going. Typically, that ratio is, is for, of capital expenditures is quite a bit higher than you saw in 2021. You can also see their fund balance grew a little bit. Again, a lot of that has to do with the timing of when major projects actually are, are going out the door. So, you know, they could be reserving those funds for these major projects. And, and you get a chance to look at those every year when they bring to you their, their transportation improvement plan. It's a six-year plan that looks forward. Here's what we're doing in each of the next six years and here's what it costs to do those programs. So I'm not going to get into too much detail, you know, with what Public Works does. But it's, again, a structure much different. The other thing that's really important to remember, especially for our newer counselor, these funds are restricted. You can't move funds from the road fund into the general fund. It's, it's restricted for specific uses. And, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that, the restriction of, of how those funds are. So any questions on the road fund before I move on? Okay.
I have a, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Just, just for adding to the conversation and review, can you talk about the amount of the road fund that is used for law enforcement?
Yes. So under the RCWs, we are allowed to transfer road fund. And it comes from the property tax revenue. It's a specific revenue source, Counselor Lentz, that we can use for. It's, it's, I'm, I'm trying to think of the, the best way to explain it. It's for road enforcement, but it, it also has to do with accident responses. And there's various activities that happen with the roadways that we're able to subsidize. Now, the amount that we send over from the road fund into the general fund is about four and a half million dollars each year. And that helps fund, fund the road deputies. It helps fund, you know, emergency responses for, you know, road and traffic situations. It's very specific. I can give you all, you know, all the detail of how that's calculated and how those components are put together. I'm happy to do so. It's, it's a fairly prescribed formula. But we, you know, we've been doing it for quite some time, so. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. Yes, and I, I don't need you to send me additional information. I'm pretty familiar with it. Just a lot of folks don't know that we do divert, I guess, currently $4 million of our road fund to the sheriff's office. Thank you.
Correct, correct. Four and a half million.
Mark, I have a question.
Yes.
Is the, is the amount of money for road maintenance sufficient to meet the needs? And I ask that because I'm roaming North Clark County a lot right now. And, and I'm noting a whole bunch of roads with a whole bunch of potholes. I mean, and then, then the concern about in rural areas for truck traffic and weight loads and, and so forth and damage to roads. I'm just wondering if the amount of money that's in here is actually sufficient to meet the demands, the needs.
You know, your timing is actually very impeccable because we are starting into that budget process and you are going to hear from Public Works all, answers to all of those questions. So I'm, I'm not an expert in, in road quality or, you know, road repair, but the timing is perfect because as that budget gets developed, you'll be able to hear all of that information, all answers to all of those questions, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, and they do have, I believe, schedules on what roads are being redone every year, so they have it scheduled out. And there is a reporting mechanism, I believe, on our website about reporting potholes so that those can get fixed as soon as possible.
I, I do know, counselor, that in the road fund, because I've worked with them on their forecast as well, they do fund their operations and their maintenance piece. And then they look to see how much capital money they have. So their, their equation is, do we have enough capital money to do the programs that we need to do? Not, not the operations or the maintenance piece, because that has to come first. And that's policy, by the way. That is council policy that we have to maintain first before we build new. So the, the, the piece that comes out the bottom is, do we have enough capital to do the projects that we need to do? Or can we match the capital we have available with existing projects?
And, Mark, I'm not sure if this is a great question for you or maybe legal counsel as far as use. I, I want to circle back to what Counselor Lentz just raised as far as law enforcement use of a small portion of the road fund. I mean, and by small, everything's relative. I mean, it's millions of dollars. You know, we get a lot of complaints, not just on potholes, but on traffic enforcement, speeding. We just heard in the RTC, you know, that the reports are somewhat staggering during the pandemic nationally, but as well as locally on the, the increased accidents and traffic fatalities. People are driving crazy. So there, there's a perception though, because we get emails on every topic, that we can fix everything. You know, traffic enforcement is something that's, you know, we, from engineering and signs and slowdown signs, we can do some of that, those traffic calming things. But traffic enforcement belongs to the sheriff, state highway patrol and the individual police departments. So my question goes to that money you just said that we transfer from the road fund. Is it possible to either add to it or restrict it to traffic enforcement? So that there, there is more robust enforcement by our own sheriff's department of the speed laws? Because the perception out there is that there's very little traffic enforcement at all in the unincorporated area. And that's, if you don't enforce the law, people are going to speed at will and drive nuts. And, and we're seeing that in our safety statistics. So is there a way to basically as a policy decision, say, hey, we're going to allocate one million a year to the sheriff's department for traffic speed enforcement? And can we be restrictive like that in our budget?
I, I just say, I, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Kathleen.
No, I can't, and you guys can correct me if I, I misspeak. But the road diversion specifically is outlined in RCW of what it can and can't be used for. So there's a menu of items that the sheriff's office could use it for. Once the money is transferred or diverted to the sheriff's office, the council does not have any authority to tell them how to spend it, but they must spend it within the RCW parameters.
And that's exactly correct. The calculation that we do actually shows the maximum amount that you could transfer based on the activity that the sheriff's office is currently doing. And as long as we are under that amount, so if we're transferring four and a half million, let's say, we need to have activity greater than four and a half million. And, and we're consistently above what we're transferring. So our calculation shows that they are doing the services related to the RCW. At least, how would I say, at least what we're transferring and actually above that at this point, so. All right, great questions. You know, this is going to, these are way better questions than our staff had, so, just going on. Next, next fund real quickly. Health department, and again, I, I don't think I can have a presentation right now without talking about the health department simply because they have been so front and center the last couple of years. The revenue and expenditures that you see out of the health department, you, you know, three years ago, I, I think it was maybe half of this, but they, we've had so much grant revenue coming in. Look at the, look at the funding source there on grants. 60 is, or 70% of the revenue coming through the health department is in grants right now. They've just, you know, they've been doing a stellar job, you know, trying to keep up with everything they have to do. But the revenue, again, streams have changed and, and the amounts. The expenditure, if you look at, you can see where that's going, salaries and benefits and supplies and services. Again, the health department uses a lot of contract services. They don't necessarily are, hire the staff as county employees. A lot of times they have to contract out, so. Their fund balance, we have a fund balance policy for, I think we do, right, Emily? We have, not yet?
Not yet. I know Jeff's been working on it, but it hasn't been formalized with the council.
So I, I'll take that back. We don't have a formal fund balance policy approved. So I I'll take that back. We don't have a formal fund balance policy or proof fund balance policy yet. But again, one of those major funds that we we've been looking at and and looking to develop. So. Questions?
Do you do you expect a significant drop in grants for the Health Department going forward?
Well, at some point, you would think we would be winding up the the pandemic efforts. I don't see it in 2023, 2022. I think their their budget is pretty much the same. And as things wind down, if nothing else comes up, sure. I think our grants will go down. But then so will the contract services as well. So we won't be, we won't be billing out for the the, a lot of these are reimbursement grants. In other words, we incur the expense and then we bill the grant. So.
And I it's not formal yet, but I did hear like they just received potentially another grant for to support the foundational public health piece that may increase like FTE to provide those necessary services in the community, but that would be coming before council. So like Mark said, the the COVID, you know, they're going into more of a maintenance phase right now. And, you know, more than the contact tracing and stuff, but there's other services that they provide in the community that they get funding for.
One of the interesting things, at least, again, just from what I hear, you know, we weren't prepared for the pandemic at the beginning. And so the heightened awareness, at least all levels of where our health departments need to be, you know, I think they felt largely ignored for a long period of time. So we'll see, you know, we'll see how that sentiment continues or not. Again, restricted funds, you can see that they have to be used for, you know, within the Health Department, they cannot be transferred out. Now, we did transfer some general fund funding into the Health Department, which it turns out they did not need as much as they thought because of some of the funding they received from the state. And and that was returned at the end of 2021 back into the general fund. So again, you know, if if they have the funding sources to do the programs without using general fund money, you know, you know, we'll work it like that. Questions on this one? All right, there's just a couple more, I think, that funds. This is just an overview. We have governmental funds. Again, I'm not going to talk about all 100 funds, but I wanted to point out some of the larger ones. Again, all restricted revenues, mental health sales tax. I know that they just recently met on the new metal, it's a committee, right? The mental health sales tax committee, looking to find out where they can help boast boost some of the programs that they're doing or bring in maybe some new programs. Again, this is tied to sales tax. So we've seen unprecedented increases in in the mental health sales tax. So, you know, that's certainly a topic we have, you know, some some room, some capacity in that to do some things. The event center or the fair fund. As you know, the fair, we we were, it's gearing up. We missed it for two years. However, they did manage it very well. They reduced expenditures where they where they needed to. The, you know, revenues, they've been able to use the exhibit hall and some of the other facilities to bring in revenues. So this fund, again, it's stable. You did approve some, I think it was, I think it came out of ARPA money, 300,000 or so for startup cost for this fair, trying to get, you know, the 10 day fair going again. And they were, you know, they're very excited about that. We'll see. We're only a couple of months away from the fair now. So. I know, Counselor Olson, that's one of your favorite favorite times of year. So. But I've talked with John Morrison several times over the last few months. Things seem to be going pretty well out there. Camp Bonneville, again, restricted funds. Depending on the level of activity out out there, right now, they're kind of in a maintenance mode. You know, a lot of a lot of water monitoring. And again, I think there's a task force also with Camp Bonneville that's getting prepared to kind of look at the the master plan. So we could see more activity through this fund in the next few years. The exhibit hall dedicated revenue fund, this is the the debt reserve fund to pay off the bonds. And Sarah spoke to that earlier, where there's going to be a bond issuance coming before you. We're looking at, one of the components is the exhibit hall bond, and that will be recommending that that bond be extended through 2042.
Forty-three.
2043. And you may be asking, well, why would we do such a thing? Well, this this has particular requirements from the state. We receive, our our county PFD receives a sales tax credit. Now, if you think about it, we're we're the the state receives 6.5% sales tax on everything. We get a small credit. I think it's point 003 to help fund our public facility district. If we have debt, we continue that through the next 20 some years. If we don't have debt, we don't receive that credit. So the the amount. And I just did this calculation. The amount we receive is about 1.9 million a year, which we can apply directly to our fairground master plan. Beginning 2028, we no longer pass through that PFD sales tax credit to the Vancouver PFD, and we'll be able to retain and use it all ourselves. So that will be part of the recommendation recommendation, and I won't steal all of Sarah's thunder, but that will be coming up shortly before you. So. Next slide.
So when we get down, when we get down to that point down the road, one of the things I want to be very sensitive to is the public's awareness of all the details and concern about their perception that we're increasing taxes.
Yeah.
I just super sensitive. There are so many people who are up in arms right now about the costs of of everything. And my perception is the if they believe that that there's going to be an increase in a tax, they're going to go ballistic. So I just want to be super sensitive to that entire topic moving forward.
Yeah, and I I know we're very careful to when we talk about the the sales tax credit, what it what it actually is, is the state allows us to actually retain a piece of our local sales tax. So it does not go to the state. So we'll be very careful to make sure that that's communicated. So. Next slide. Community development, our building fund. Building in the county has not suffered due to the pandemic. The building fund is as healthy as it's been since I've been here. There's seems to be even even this year with a little bit. Our single family housing starts are a little bit lower this year, but they're still at a a pretty good level. Our expenditure side of this, again, salaries and benefits, you know, it's it's a a very FTE driven department. You're talking about building inspectors, you're talking about plan reviewers, you know, engineers. It's it's very labor intensive. So. Questions on, again, and I want to emphasize, another restricted fund, right? Any revenue we receive from those license and permits or the charges for services have to be spent. There is a general fund component of this, by the way. And I've talked about this before, and and it may be good for Council of Ryland to hear this. We have two major kind of business units within the community, within this fund. One is the building department, the other is the land use department. Building fees cannot be used for land use. So anytime the land use fees do not pay for all of the activity, it it becomes a general fund subsidy. And you can see in 2021, that amounted to about 1.2 million dollars from the general fund that was transferred to pay for land use. Okay. And I want to be very clear, it's land use, not building. So. Parks. We have a Metropolitan Park District that is it receives property tax for the maintenance and operation of parks, not construction, but the maintenance and operation. Anything within the primarily the urban Vancouver urban growth area. This was designed and set up 2003, 2004, so that we could build. And I'm going to say, use the number 35, but it's probably more like 42. We build a lot of parks out in the Vancouver urban growth area. The the property tax is only applied within the the MPD or the urban growth area. I don't know that, I mean, this is pretty pretty well defined. You'll you will see that there's a general fund component also this. There are parks that are within that boundary that do not qualify or within the county. For example, we maintain Lewisville Park. It's not in the urban growth area. That has to be paid for with general fund. All of those regional parks like Salmon Creek and Vancouver Lake and Frenchman's Bar, those those are not part of the MPD. So we we pay for the maintenance and operation of those parks with general fund money. So. On this, you look at the projected fund balance, it's it's, you know, we're spending about what we what we receive in. The the big question is, as new parks come online, and I believe there's just a couple more to finish at this point. I think there's a couple of community parks that they're finishing. Can we continue to maintain or will will the expense growth to maintain those parks grow faster than our revenue? And that's something we're trying to project out in, you know, Counselor Ryland, who mentioned, do we get to see out in the future? Well, absolutely. During the budgetary process, you'll look at that five year forecast and be able to tell, well, do our revenues meet our expense demands? So. Last, I think this is my last one. Oh, mental health sales tax. Again, we talked about this already a little bit. Any questions on that one? No? Okay, we have capital funds. Our REIT, a REIT is becoming a good story for us. And we'll talk more about that during the budgetary process, but there is some REIT one available. We have a lot of REIT two available, which is used for, you know, roads and lightings and sidewalks and things like that. A lot of times that goes into the road fund. Traffic impact fees, again, those are capital funds. They go into the capital program, park impact fees. And I'm just going to make a comment real quickly. On our park impact fees, because of the way we have impact fee districts, we have certain, we have certain areas that we're receiving or have received impact fees where we're in what we call. And would you know what? I forgot the term. Anyway, we we have not spent our impact fees quickly enough. Do you remember, Emily, the term? I just I just I'm in a blank right now. Sorry. It'll come to be probably three slides later. Anyway. So we're working with Public Works now to find out, you know, what we need to do. By law, if we haven't spent the impact fees within 10 years, we need to pay those back. So there's going to be some issues we have to deal with. It's not, there are not a lot of park districts, but I think there's at least two in park impact fee districts, we're going to going to have to return money because we did not use it quickly enough. Concurrent, we're in concurrency. So. All right. Conservation futures, clearly. Okay, moving on. Last slide, I think. Enterprise funds. These are operated like businesses, revenues, expenses. Hopefully, we're not operating at a loss. Try Mountain. You know, that's the one that we're always monitoring most closely. Clean water, which you may not think about as a, it's more of like a utility where we receive fees in and we make expenditures specifically for, you know, stormwater management. Again, all restricted funds. And one more. And then we have internal service funds. These are funds where we we bring revenue in from many different funds because they're receiving the benefit of those services. A good example of this is general liability. That's our insurance fund. So all of the funds pay into it. And then we disperse it for those those in, you know, insurance or, you know, sometimes we have settlements, different things. Facilities is another internal service fund where everyone contributes based on their facilities. And then then we spend it out of those internal service funds. Next slide. That's all of the funds. Any questions on funds? I know that's a lot. I hope you can appreciate that having an accounting system that allows us to do this, it's like doing the accounting for 80 separate businesses. And we have to do that every day. So every transaction that comes in, we have to make sure it gets put in the right fund, that the expenditure is authorized, that, you know, it's approved. We couldn't do that without the, you know, the systems that we have in place. It it just would be impossible to do. I know that that's the same system that Sarah is using for the revenue side of things. When you have more than 300 revenues in a single fund and all the other revenues that come into the other funds. It, you know, we're you know, grateful for the people that work and and do that work every day to make sure that things are going correctly. We're we're just about done with our audit this year. We will be getting our audit report probably in the next two weeks. I and I don't anticipate that there's going to be any issues as far as the controls, the the funding, any of the things that would be a big concern. So.
Mark, you had the the lion's share of the presentation today. I know, Sarah, and I appreciate you covering all of that on behalf of the team. But again, yes, thank you, guys, for your time today. There's a lot of details underneath everything we've talked about today. And as Marcus said, we're we're here and available to answer any questions that you may have. There's a lot of budget activity that's going to be forthcoming. I've asked Tina to provide you some details just from the Budget Office perspective, so we don't have to go over those details in the presentation. But all of that's there for you to start to take a look at, and there'll be a lot of conversations to come forward with that. Any final questions or anything else for the finance team today? Thank you, guys, very much.
Counsel, is there a desire to take a five minute break before the next one? Okay, I'm seeing three. All right, we'll come back at 10:04. Recording. Okay, so welcome back. The next item on the agenda is a refresher on the Open Public Meetings Act, Ethics and the Public Records Act. As mentioned yesterday, there have, there has been an update to OPMA. Most of this should be a refresher, as I know all the counselors go through some of the trainings when you become an elected official. But Leslie Lopez, our chief civil prosecuting attorney, did I say that right? Will be presenting this morning. So go ahead, Leslie.
Great, thank you. And first of all, I'll apologize. I woke up with a little bit of a frog in my voice today. So I will do my best to get through this, and I do have plenty of water. So we'll get started. As Kathleen mentioned, this is a refresher. We can go to the next slide. Thank you. So we'll be talking about ethics review. The Open Public Meetings Act, there is new legislation, so we'll go over some of those changes. And then just a refresher on the Public Records Act. And please let me know if you have any questions as we go along. Thank you. So first, we'll start off with ethics. And as you know, that's codified in chapter 42.23 of the RCW. And I've just pointed out some of the main things here. The first one is regarding contracting interests that no municipal officer shall be beneficially interested, either directly or indirectly in a contract, such that they receive some type of benefit. In addition, RCW 4223070 has the list of prohibited uses of public office. That includes using a position to secure special privilege or an exemption for themselves or others. It prohibits It prohibits giving or receiving compensation or gifts related to the officer's services. The officer may not accept employment that might reasonably require or induce the officer to disclose confidential information. And finally, the officer may not disclose confidential information gained by reason of their position or to use the information for personal gain or benefit. Next slide, please. Another statute that talks about ethics related to public officials has to do with RCW forty two seventeen A five five five, which states that a public official may not use or authorize the use of any of public facilities for the purpose of assisting a campaign for election. The former Board of County Commissioners passed a resolution in regards to that stating that they wished to exceed the state requirements in the statute. And that what it says is that the public information outreach staff is directed to refrain from countywide mailings featuring commissioner candidates, or in this case, councillor candidates for reelection within sixty days of any general election unless there's a compelling need to communicate with the general public. Next slide, please. So as you know, the charter also contains provisions regarding ethics, specifically Article Five, Section five point seven. States that county elected officials should not use their positions to secure employment or special employment privileges for themselves. And they should not solicit or accept benefit or compensation. This is directly mirrors the RCW. Next slide, please. And then, as you know, there were some charter amendments that were passed in November of two thousand twenty one. Specifically, Article Eight, Sections eight point one two and eight point one three, talk about the council adopting an ordinance, establishing a code of ethics and penalties for the violation of this code. The next slide will go through that Clark County Code that was passed, which is two point oh seven point zero one zero. Charter also states that the all departments and entities that receive funding through the county budget and all officials elected are subject to the code of ethics. The county manager in conjunction with the county manager of the county council shall appoint an autonomous ethics review commission to deal with this. It's my understanding that that's already been started or is currently in the works. The Ethics Review Commission will be charged with hearing and ruling on complaints and violations of the code of ethics. And then finally, an ethics oversight office will operate an ethics complaint hotline, accept and investigate potential ethics complaints, and then provide staff to the Ethics Review Commission. Next slide.
Good question.
Certainly.
So when the Ethics Commission was passed by the voters in November, was there a specific date that was to take effect? And if so, could you share? I just I don't remember.
Certainly, let me go ahead.
As I say, I believe it's July thirty first, and I'll just put this out there because I know we have community members watching as well. We only received one applicant for that commission, and it's a three person board. So we have re-submitted another press release, and we're also reaching out to the local bar association and others who may be qualified to get applicants for that. But by the charter, it was, I believe it was July thirty first that we need to have that in place.
Okay, but if there were complaints or if there are complaints filed before this committee or this commission is put into place, when you get the adequate number of people that you need, what happens to those complaints?
They're brought forward to the council, and the council determines if it meets the they have three options. One, to investigate right away. Two, identify whether or not it falls within the definition of ethics as defined by RCW. Or three, you can not do anything and wait until the ethics commission.
Thank you.
Thank you, and that is correct. That the charter states that the requirement is honored before July thirty one, two thousand twenty two. So next here is the Clark County Code that was passed by the council. It's two point oh seven point zero one zero. And as the council is fully aware, since it passed it, it adheres to the requirements of state law, but also refers to the Clark County Human Resources Policy thirteen point one. And it promotes honesty, openness, and accountability in all public matters involving county government. And in regards to any one who is accused of violating the subsection one, that will be subject to review by the Clark County Ethics Review Commission. Next slide, please. So before I move on, are there any other questions related to ethics?
No, just just broad general. What if you can't get three people in place by July thirty first?
Well, I think that we just keep working on it. I, you know, that's we have to follow the process that's been set forth in the in the charter. Hopefully, we'll get some people ready to assist.
But so anything would still come before the council? The council is the de facto until such time as you get this in place. Okay.
Thank you, Council Rylander.
Can I go ahead and interject one thing? So I mean, there's a gap here, and that was we suspended our process. We had pending complaints, and we still have, I think, at least one. But we suspended our process in light of it's it just didn't work. It could not work as constituted. We were working on revising our own processes when the voter initiative was passed. And then we worked further and then passed the new one. So we're still putting it together. And certainly, the lack of applications was a surprise with all the interest that we had in these ethics complaints and and our processes. No one applied. So so our process is still suspended. Correct me if I'm wrong. And we're waiting to put this new voter initiative in place. And so we're still kind of suspended.
Well, I believe, and Leslie, you can correct me if I'm wrong. The rules of procedure were suspended when COVID started to provide flexibility for the council. But the council did just adopt new rules of procedure, and I don't believe those are suspended since those were adopted. But with regards to a process, yeah, and Council Mevige are correct, the process wasn't clear with the council and the roles and how that was going to work. But the some of the complaints that have come forward have been dismissed because council determined that it did the complaint did not meet the regulations identified in RCW.
Yeah, so the COVID suspension of our rules of procedure was separate from our suspending our ethics process.
Okay, are there any other questions? All right, thank you. Next, we'll talk about the Open Public Meetings Act, which is codified in chapter forty two point three zero of the RCW. First, we'll talk about meetings. All meetings must be open and public except for executive session. Quorum of the council meets together with the intent of transacting council business. There is something called a chain meeting. There is case law that says that can occur when emails are exchanged between a quorum of counselors that involve the active exchange of information and opinions in contrast to mere passive receipt of information. There is also a Washington Supreme Court case that talks about a serial meeting, which confirmed that a serial meeting requires a collective intent to meet by the participants in the case. Next slide, please. So when we're talking about action for the Open Public Meetings Act, all action must take place in an open public meeting. Action is defined in RCW forty two thirty point zero two zero as the transaction of council official business, including, but not limited to, receipt of public testimony, deliberations, discussions, considerations, reviews, evaluations, and final actions. Next slide, please. So House Bill thirteen twenty nine was passed this year, and it made some, I would say, significant changes. These are the ones that are effective June nine, two thousand twenty two, which is today. And important to note, so the first one regards public meetings. So meetings subject to the OPMA must be held in a physical location and must allow the public to attend in person absent an emergency. This is obviously a departure from what we've been dealing with the past couple of years during the pandemic and emergency proclamations. So as of today, all meetings must have a physical location and allow the public to attend in person. The House Bill thirteen twenty nine states that any or all members of the governing body can choose to attend the in person meeting remotely. So in other words, just because the public is attending in person, the members of the governing body are not required to do so. And I believe the county has instituted a practice that not only the members of the governing body, but also county staff have the option of appearing remotely. Last aid is encouraged, but not required for a governing body to provide a remote attendance option as long as there are no limitations to in person meeting attendance. And the county is already doing that. I mean, we're doing that right now. We have people who can come in person, but can also attend remotely by WebEx. Next slide, please. The next change has to do with public comment, and this is also effective today, June nine, two thousand twenty two. And the change is that public comment at regular meetings of a governing body of a public agency where final action is taken is now a requirement. So to kind of break that down, we'll look at the definitions of what a regular meeting is. RCW forty two thirty oh seven five describes a regular meeting shall mean recurring meetings held in accordance with the periodic schedule declared by statute or rule. And I put in here such as the council's rules of procedure. So based on this definition, if we're looking at the rules of procedure, the regular meetings that occur would include the first and third Tuesdays of the month, as well as the council time meetings that occur on Wednesdays. Now, final action is also defined in the statute under RCW forty two thirty zero two zero. And it's defined as either a collective positive or negative decision or an actual vote by a majority of the members of a governing body when sitting as a body or entity upon a motion, proposal, a resolution, order, or ordinance. And I understand that there are times in council time, perhaps, where final action does not take place. But there are also times where final action does take place. If there's a motion or a direction given, that could be considered final action. So that's why it is my suggestion that moving forward public comment be added to the agenda for council time.
Leslie, can I jump in here for a quick second?
Certainly.
This might be something that the council wants to consider for further discussion. When I first started on the council, council time or board time was an opportunity for the council to meet with staff to to discuss policy issues, things happening in the county, upcoming issues. And we never took action in council time. We didn't take votes. We didn't pass resolutions. It was general discussion. And again, I don't, I personally don't care if we take public comment during council time, but that was never the intent or purpose of council time was to take action. It was for the council to meet, talk about upcoming policy issues in an informal manner. So just for history and background with regard to this new rule and new law, we might want to consider how we deal with council time.
Thank you, Council Olson. That's a good point, and I appreciate the historical reference on that. And that's certainly something the council can discuss and decide how you want to handle that moving forward. Next slide, please. So also in regards to public comment, the public agency must allow for public to orally comment at the meeting. So that would be in person or submit written comment prior to or at all regular meetings. The House Bill does not specify when during the meeting public comment must be taken. That's a policy decision. And if the agency allows verbal public comment during the regular meeting, the House Bill requires the agency, when feasible, to provide an option for verbal public comment to be submitted by telephone or video conferencing. So to allow an individual who have difficulty attending the meeting by reason of disability, limited mobility, or any other reason that makes physical attendance at the meeting difficult. And as I mentioned, the county is already providing this to the public as people can call in to give public comment. Next slide, please.
Leslie, on that first bullet.
Okay, let's go back.
By whose choice is it that the public comments orally or that they submit written comment? Is that by the the public member's choice?
Yes, I mean, it has. So the public agency has to allow for the public to orally comment at the meeting or submit written comment. So
But that that sounds like it could be at the choice of the public agency. And I that's not written well, so I'm not sure what it means.
Okay. So it does mean that there can be a choice for one or the other by the agency. However, because of the, you know, it's been a longstanding practice, I know of the county to allow all, you know, publicly oral comment, written comment, as well as meeting by
My discomfort comes with it flipped the other way, that the public agency would allow written comment only to suffice for the public comment that was given.
Well, okay, so there there is a requirement that the the slide before states that there is a requirement, I believe, that indicated that that the public is allowed to be in person and provide public comment orally. That is a requirement.
Good, okay, thank you.
Sorry, didn't write that clearly. Yes.
Oh, I thought that was a quote from HB thirteen twenty nine. I was not talking about you, Leslie.
And Leslie, just a clarification on this HB thirteen twenty nine as well. With regards to adding the public comment to, say, council time, it can be restricted to just those agenda items for council time, not general public comment. Is that correct?
Yes, that it doesn't. The House Bill doesn't specify the the time or the subject matter that's used for public comment, so that could be something that the council as a whole decides. Any other questions on this part? So just this is not part of the House Bill, but I just wanted to point this out regarding the three different types of public comment based on the rules of procedure. So the first one, you know, typically, based on the rules of procedure by the council, Rule seven A, that during the public meetings, the public can comment on separate business. So that is one time that the public can comment during the public meeting. The other is pursuant to the rules of procedure, Rule seven L, which states that there is also during the public meetings, there's open which states that there is also during the public meetings, there's open public comment. And this line is directly from the Rules of Procedure, is that that comment can be on any matter germane to county business, but is not specifically on the hearing or meeting agenda. So in other words, if the subject is already contained in separate business or is part of a public hearing, then it's not part of the open public comment. And then the last type of public comment has to do with public hearings. And public hearing is intended to obtain public testimony or comment before significant decisions are made. Or it's as required by certain statutes, codes, or other regulations. There are certain actions that the county takes where the statute or some other regulation requires the county to have a public hearing. And during that public hearing, comment is provided specifically in regards to that public hearing.
Question, Leslie, on the first bullet is, if we could go back to that, thank you. Is its intent to eliminate comment on the consent calendar?
Well, I took this directly from the Rules of Procedure, which I think you are talking about today. And for some reason, when I looked at the Rules of Procedure, the consent was crossed out.
I can jump in here too, just again with a little bit of history. The agenda has changed over the years and how the council and the Board of Commissioners used to handle consent, they split everything on consent except public hearing items. And the definition of consent is we don't take public comment on consent. That's why it's consent. So we just approve it, or unless we pull things off, and then we can have those separately discussed. And then we started taking things out, rather than putting everything on consent. We took, we, we thought were more important items that the, that the community might be interested in hearing more detail about and added up an agenda item of separate business. So that's where that piece came in. So it seems to me, and any board that I've ever sat on, consent is consent. We don't, we don't talk about it. It's, that's why it's on the consent agenda. So those items that we want to discuss, either pulled off or they're added to the separate business section of the agenda.
So as that pertains to us now, are we going to take away the opportunity for public comment on consent?
So I would like to comment, not only on what, what we're discussing, but what Councilor Olson just mentioned. So I, I have found the rules confusing. And they are no doubt confusing to the public because we've had many meetings where we've basically not allowed people to speak, and they should be able to speak. And they never seem to get it right as to when they can speak, between the public hearing, between public, general public comment. And then as to consent issues, the only further comment I'd make on that, because I don't think we should be so inflexible or restrictive. We, we wanted to make our business more efficient, so we kind of greatly expanded what went into the consent agenda. And it should be ministerial routine. But nevertheless, that's somewhat arbitrary, what makes it onto the consent agenda. And so, for instance, just recently, I took a few things off just because I wanted to comment on them. I think they needed comment. And I think that holds true for the public as well. So I'm hoping that when we get to possible changes on our rules, that we throw, throw in a little bit more flexibility. Or we need to, we need to be more clear with the public on how they can make comment and when. And it's especially confusing in a hybrid situation where you have some people in. I mean, it was a little bit easier when, you know, you just went to the list, the sign-in list and called people forward. It was pretty straightforward. But now with the hybrid proceeding, it's not. So I, I just wanted to make those comments because I, I felt uncomfortable many times when we've shut people down. And sometimes they just drop off and then they don't stay to the appropriate time to make their public comment. I want to throw in one other issue. My very first meeting at RTC, we had one person, and this was pre-pandemic, one person to provide comment. And, and I think they allowed two minutes. And they were like really four seconds over the two minutes and they got cut off. He was the only speaker there. I mean, it was just plain rude not to give him a little bit more time to allow him to complete his comment. So, you know, I fully respect the chair and her need to control the meetings, especially when we have and/or anticipate a lot of public comment. But we need to streamline this, make it flexible. And regarding consent particularly, if people want to speak to consent items, I think they should be allowed to.
Well, my point, Councilor, was that if the consent agenda is allowed for comment, it should be listed here, not just omitted. So, you know, I think it's fine to have opportunity for public comment on consent. But it is, the fact is that it is not listed here. And if we want it here, I think it, it should be added as a addendum to the OPMA.
Chair Berman, in the Rules of Procedure, and I think somebody had mentioned this, and it may have been Emma or Leslie, it does include public testimony on, and it does say consent and, and that's struck through. So we can, that's our next agenda item, but we can certainly look at taking that back off on consent so that comments can be received. And I know, I know since you've been chair, you've actually done a great job in in communicating when it's time to comment on the separate business. And I think you've actually included consent on that time and on the agenda before the open public comment. And the other thing I just want to share with the council. So I am the one that reviews the staff reports and determines and recommends if items should be on consent or separate business. The thought process that I go through for consent are things that are just renewing a contract that we've had for years, receiving grants that was already approved by council, approving, you know, contracts that have already been reviewed and discussed with council. So if there's anything new and outside of that routine, that's what I put on separate business. So that's just, just wanted to share my thought process. And of course, anybody can pull, any counselor can pull a consent item. But that is when I'm trying to determine which one or which part of the agenda that item should be on.
Great. So let's go ahead and add the, what we just said, the consent agenda for public comment to item four, if we may, so that we're sure to get it.
Yes, I, I've already got it marked.
Just to comment on comments. I, I think if we have to err, we should err on the side of being able to allow people to comment just in general, because most people just want to be heard. They want to have their moment to express themselves. And they may or may not get what they want, but at least they want to be heard. And I think we need to bend over backwards to make sure that happens. And I think that's been happening. I just want to reiterate the importance.
Thank you, councilors. So this last slide regarding the Open Public Meetings Act is just a definition of the differences between a public meeting and a public hearing. Public meetings are governed by the procedures of the OPMA and generally occur whenever a quorum of a governing body meets together and deals with the business of that body. Public hearings, on the other hand, are primarily intended to obtain public testimony or comment before significant decisions are made. A public hearing can occur as part of a regular or a special public meeting, or in some circumstances can be entirely separate from a public meeting. In other words, you can just have a public hearing without being a part of a public meeting. A public hearing is necessary when due process is required or when a specific statute or local regulation requires one. And a local government may also hold a public hearing when it desires public input on a sensitive or controversial policy issue. Are there any questions about that? Okay. Then we will, thank you for the next slide. So in talking about the Public Records Act, I know that you're all very well-versed with this, but we'll just go over it briefly. It's codified in Chapter 4256 of the RCW. Public records are presumed disclosable unless an exemption is permitted. The chapter is liberally construed, and its exemptions narrowly construed promote the public policy and assure that the public interests will be fully protected. A public record is any writing, including recordings or electronic data, containing information relating to conduct of government or performance of any governmental or propriety function, prepared, owned, used, or retained by a local agency. Any questions on the definition of a public record? All right, next slide, please. So in regards to the Public Records Act with personal devices and social media, communications that are sent or received on personal devices, personal email or social media, I apologize, that's a, that says medial, that's incorrect. That's a spelling check did not catch that for me. Social media may be public records if the messages posted relate to the conduct of government and are prepared or received within a public official scope of employment or in the individual's official capacity. So just as a reminder on that, there are certain retention requirements under RCW 4014, and the retention schedules are listed at the site there. Any questions on this? Next slide, please. And then lastly, this is just recommended best practices for the OPMA and the Public Records Act is to do your best to use only county email address for county business. Using personal email, personal phone for agency business, including text messages, opens the door to requiring a search of personal device for responding to a public records request. A best practice to avoid serial conversations on an issue for purpose of obtaining consent or quorum on a matter. And lastly, if there are more than three councilors in attendance at a meeting that's not noticed or open to the public, is to avoid conversations with more than two councilors at a time and to avoid sitting together. That's all I have for my presentation. Are there any questions? Thank you for your time.
Get better.
Thank you.
Are we ready to move forward, or does council need a couple of minutes? Okay, I'm thinking we can move forward. So the next item on the agenda is regarding rules of procedure. So there's a couple of things, I think, on this agenda item that would be helpful for discussion with council. One is talking about some approval processes such as agenda items, proclamations, anything that's being requested by council that, or even, you know, if council is wanting staff to add to their workload, what does that mean? It's usually a majority of the council needs to support that. And then also, if there, I know we just adopted the new rules of procedures back in April of this year. I did read these as well and found a couple minor things, including the consent one, that we can go through and update as well if the council would like to do that this morning. So for processes, and actually, part of this is in the rules of the procedure as well. But for, just as a reminder, for any counselor who wants to add something to the Wednesday council time for consideration, has to have the, either the chair or, the chair can do that, or a second counselor. So there would have to be two people to recommend putting something on the agenda. One part in the rules of procedure that I was questioning a little bit. Staff, if you could just scroll down to page seven. It's under item seven. And go down to, so just, yeah, if you can go down to E. Actually, let's start with D. So item D on here states that the county manager has the authority to place organs, resolutions, and our staff reports on Tuesday's meeting agenda after review. That, I know it's talking about the Tuesday meeting, and it looks like this does not call out separately the Wednesday meeting, other than an item P at the end. And I did hear Councilor Olson talk about the history and not having staff reports or resolutions at a council time. The times that I think it may be appropriate for a council time to have staff reports is if there's an emergency, like a sinkhole, which we've seen that caused a road closure that council has to approve, or if there's unforeseen deadlines that are coming up. So we get notified today that there's a grant opportunity and we have to apply prior to the next Tuesday meeting. So I think if council is amendable, that we can draft some language to provide that flexibility, but still try to restrict what is on the Wednesday meeting. Is there any questions or concerns with that?
Yes, I am not seeing your reference to the Wednesday. D is referencing Tuesday?
Yes. And so the next, so let me go back. So there, this is, because I've got two topics on this one. So usually, I've never seen a counselor amend the Tuesday agenda because I set the agenda with the consent and separate business. The only time council adds things to the agenda is on a Wednesday meeting. And, and so, and also, so that's part of E, so I'll go to that one next. But the D is the county manager has the authority to place these things on Tuesday. I would like to suggest language in there or Wednesday upon certain circumstances, such as unforeseen deadlines, emergencies that must be addressed prior to the Tuesday meeting to give that flexibility.
Oh, I see. And D. Is that correct? Okay, I, I see, yes.
Okay, is there any, and we'll bring this back with actual draft language for your review. I just want to make sure, does anybody have any concerns with that? Okay, hearing none, then we'll move forward with that. So Section E, this is talking about the Tuesday meeting, and the counselor can seek to put an item on the Tuesday meeting agenda. Will take that into the council chair in support of at least one other counselor. That conversation, from my understanding, was actually for Wednesday's meeting. And language was added under P as impal, if you can scroll down. So I would recommend deleting E because the only time that I know of a counselor asking to put something on the Tuesday agenda was like a recognition from the Kowalski tribe. And then, you know, for the proclamations, I mean, that is something that council can bring forward to council time for the conversation and direction, and then that would be put on to a Tuesday meeting. But I, and maybe Councilor Olson has some history on whether or not counselors have ever added anything to a Tuesday agenda. I think it's mostly been Wednesday.
It's not common. I wouldn't exclude it though, because a situation may occur, but it doesn't happen very often. But adding a Wednesday would, would make sense.
Yeah, and Wednesday is identified in P because that, I know that was the conversation when you were updating the Rules of Procedure before, was how do we get things on the agenda that council wants to bring forward, such as a draft proclamation or a letter of support for another agency that would need council support? So that is what's identified here on P.
In P2, how many people are involved? It sounds like three, as it's written here. Is that the intent?
I think how it's being applied based on the conversation, and I agree with what you're saying, it involves three, but it would have to have two counselors to support it, but they would let the chair know. And maybe we need to rework that language a little bit to be a little clearer.
Yeah, I was under the understanding it could be a counselor and the chair.
Yes.
Or two counselors taking the item to the chair, just as an information item. So.
Yes, and I, and I would agree with that. So we may be able to clarify that a little bit and just say it's two counselors, regardless of your chair or not, and that would have to just be communicated. of your chair or not, and that would have to just be communicated to me and you had to make sure we put that on the agenda. But it would be two counselors to approve it, which is how we've been applying them.
Yes. That will be better, or clear, more clear, let me put it that way.
Is there anything in here that you wanted in addition for process for getting things on the Wednesday agenda or topics that are discussed on Wednesday?
Is proclamation a separate topic?
We, you can include that as well. And so, you know, what has been happening historically for these conversations is that it, the request comes in, whether from outside agency or from two counselors, we put that on the agenda, it is discussed, there's drafts. Usually there's an intent, an intentional date that is shared on which it wants to be on the Tuesday agenda to read that proclamation. What I can do moving forward as well, I mean, if we want to continue just following this procedure for that item, is I can clarify at the end that, okay, we are ready to present this on a Tuesday meeting to ensure that everybody is on the same page.
So we would be affirming on a Wednesday, if I'm understanding this, affirming that it is ready to go to a Tuesday meeting in the form that is being presented at that point in time. And if there are further edits, it's different. It would be handled differently. I don't know how, but just clearly stated somehow that would be different. But normally, that would be voted on, well, or determined, I guess you would say, at the Wednesday meeting. I don't know if we'd, I think we, I almost think we do need a vote, even though we don't normally vote on, on things on Wednesday, just for clarity.
Yes, so we do it based on the majority supporting. So there's not usually a formal motion and approval and a vote, but more of, okay, is how many people are in support? We have a majority, we move forward. And yes, you are correct, if there are edits, we can, and we've done this as well, we can bring it back the next meeting to make sure that the language is what the majority of the council wants and supports. So we can certainly continue to do that as well. When you talk about final forms, sometimes we get things from a constituent with a proclamation request, that's just the word document, but then we will put it on like the letterhead for the proclamation and the signatures. That may happen between the, the Wednesday meeting that council supports it going to Tuesday and the Tuesday meeting.
But if the words are changed, it can become a different proclamation.
Right, so.
And that is, I think, something that we need to be real clear on, that if we are giving the nod on Wednesday, what are we giving the nod to?
Yes, I will be, I will be clear on that at the end of the conversation on a Wednesday meeting about the proclamation. I am also uncomfortable with saying, you know, here's a draft letter, a draft proclamation, let's edit it, but still send it out next week, because we need to make sure we're following OPMA and making sure that we're having that discussion and that direction in a public meeting. So I think this will help eliminate that. If there needs to be additional edits that need to be made after the Wednesday meeting, we will bring it back to the next Wednesday meeting for conversation unless we're editing, you know, real time during the meeting and there's agreement at that time.
So are we going to have a separate item talking about this in our rules?
That's, if that's the desire of the council, I.
It would be mine, just for clarity, but that's my opinion.
So as the newest kid on the block, this has been confusing to me, what was editable and not and when, and when you could introduce edits post, et cetera. I have shared at least one and there've been several proclamations that I thought could be further refined and be, I, in my opinion, maybe even better. And yet it wasn't clear to me what I could do or not do and when I could do it or had to do it in order to make sure that it was, was in the mix, not trying to miss a due date for the intent to actually present the proclamation to the public. So however we do this, I personally would appreciate it so that it would add some clarity, some timelines in this division detail.
So I, I can communicate that clearly on where we're at. Just keep in mind that as counselors also bring forward these things, sometimes the deadline's very quick and a very quick turnaround. So one of the things, like I said, we can do is do real time edits during the meeting so that we're not doing edits after the meeting in order to meet the timeframe that the constituent or counselor is meeting as well.
Well, let's address that in that paragraph that is being added too, because that does change the timeline and the procedures that we're following. And if, if we know what we're allowing, then when it comes time for Tuesday, we know what we're voting on.
Couple of comments as well. I think especially in a hybrid world, we really need to be clear on the votes. It was one of the first confusing things I experienced as a counselor, that I didn't even know a vote had occurred, only to find out later that it was passed. So this, you know, the common, hey, I see three heads nodding or three thumbs up, I think that needs to go by the wayside. I think it, you know, the public is entitled to know who votes for what, who supports what publicly, transparently. So I think we need to have a more formal vote. Doesn't have to be a roll call, but at least to make it really clear to the council as well as the public that something was just passed. And so I, on that topic, I don't have anything else to say. I did want to address, but I don't know if now is the time to do it, going back to the procedural rule on reconsideration. Is this the time to also talk about it in this section or, because it really only applies to a Tuesday, more likely the Tuesday, public meetings?
We can talk about it. Yes, we can chat about that now, but I want to close this conversation first before we move forward. I think what might help, if you want, I can draw some language in here about any items in council time that are being considered from council will require a voice vote. And that way, I'm not putting anything in there on proclamations, because this could be a letter of support, this could be a proclamation, this could be a work session request, it could be direction from council to staff on how to do something. So it's clearly been, you know, stated and in the minutes that there was a vote on any item that's on council time agenda and it's a voice vote that we can monitor. Is that acceptable?
Which means that it would have been passed or approved with that voice.
Yes, it would be a.
It's closed to further, unless you found something really goofy.
No, it would be a motion to, like, I move to approve and move this proclamation and present it at Tuesday, June 5th meeting. And there would be a second discussion and a vote.
It sounds like it would be clearer.
That we can do that and we can do that on all the items that we have on, on the council time agenda. So that way, we're not excluding anything that gets on that agenda, but it will provide the clarity on what is approved.
Kathleen, sorry to jump in just now, but if that is occurring at the council time meetings, taking a motion and taking a vote, that'll be final action, which means you would need to add public comment to the council time meetings pursuant to the.
I would, yeah, I would recommend to council that we would put the public comment at the beginning of the agenda for anybody to make public testimony on any agenda item only at council time. But that certainly, if you want to open up to open public general comment, you, it sounds like you have that ability as well. Are we okay with doing just open public comment for agenda items on Wednesday?
I am.
Sometimes by that type of comment, we mean something that is not on the agenda. So we'd have to be very specific that this time we mean open comment on items that are on the agenda. It gives us a little different category there on open comment.
Yeah, it would be similar to the one that you do for, on Tuesday, for consent and separate business. And so we, we would say the same thing there, that this is for items that are on today's agenda, one through five, you know, and you have three minutes.
That would give the public the, the full access to being open to any of those topics, which would be good.
And that would be at the very beginning of the meeting, correct?
I would recommend yes, but, because I.
Sure, then they don't have to stick around if they, they can make their comment and they can move on and.
Right. And the intent is, is to give the community an opportunity for them to share their opinion prior to you taking action. I mean, that, that's part of, that's what a public testimony is, is to make sure you're, that they have that access to council and provide their input. And I can, I'll look at the rules of procedure too and see if there's a, a place that I need to add that in here as well. Sorry, Counselor Olson.
That's okay. You know, just a thought about this public comment council time question. Would it make sense that if there's nothing on the agenda for that council time that that's stated clearly that no action will be taken or, so that if there is a specific issue that, that we need to take a vote on, or there's an emergency, or there's something where we're going to take a vote, then that can be clearly stated at the beginning so that, you know, there's, we're not wasting our time or their time for those who wish to make comments.
Yes, we can certainly do that. The other, just update that I would propose that I bring back to you at the next council meeting is under item L, which is at the bottom of that same page. In the middle there, it says the chair can request, okay, this is about times, and then speaker should sign in on a sheet provided at the back of the hearing room. So this is how we were prior to COVID and we're doing this now, that when constituents come in for an in-person meeting, there's signup sheets on whether they're going to talk about the consent or separate business item, open public comment or a specific public hearing, so they sign in. I would recommend just adding, or virtually if applicable, so that we capture the virtual process in here and it doesn't look as restrictive. And, but it gives still the flexibility if something changes in the future that we aren't doing virtual anymore, but just to identify that in that section. Any concerns with updated?
I'm sorry, I hear someone else. No, I have a little concern with the chair requesting additional time for a speaker. Here's why. We've had this year, situations where one person intended to testify and they had another friend or two friends or three friends who wanted to yield their time to their, their one speaker, to that one speaker, their friend. And that would end up with a three-minute thing becoming 12 minutes or 15 minutes or whatever. I said no, because that, I didn't remember that this was in here, because I did not see that as consistent with our purpose of allowing everyone to speak. So I, I'm uncomfortable with that, except in the most unusual of circumstance, and frankly, I can't think of one now, when it would be appropriate for the chair to just give extra time to people who wish to testify. I don't know if others disagree on that. I mean, maybe they should have given this one person nine minutes or 12 minutes.
Karen, I don't disagree with you, but I do have an example for you that I think highlights the point, and I think it, it didn't turn out real well. When we heard from the mini initiative, which is very, very unique, and created different rules, you know, we had somewhat, I wouldn't say arbitrarily, but we discussed the amount of time that the proponent of the mini initiative would be able to speak. And, you know, I, I actually, as one, was hoping to give him more time, but we ultimately agreed to have equal time between what the lawyer would present and what the presenter of the mini initiative would present. And then that all fell by the wayside because, and, and I really appreciated Leslie's presentation. It was absolutely essential to the hearing. But, you know, the proponent, I can't remember the time now, was given like five minutes or so, and then the lawyer was basically given as much time as it took. And so there was a lot of perception of unfairness out there. But I agree generally, people shouldn't be able to yield time to their whole neighborhood association and have limited time or their neighbors or however many. I think there are unique times and we've experienced it with the equestrian community, the rest, parents of wrestlers, you know, when we have a lot of public comment, we really do need to construct appropriate rules to make sure we have an orderly meeting and one that doesn't go on for many, many hours late into the night.
And I can just share with the mini initiative, so that timeframe was not for the open public comment that this section is talking about. That was actually somebody who was leading the initiative, much like if there's a public hearing where a property owner is asking for a zone change and they have representation who presents the council as part of the presentation, not part of open public comment. So Chair, are you requesting that, that sentence be removed?
I believe the whole thing. The chair can request additional time for the speaker or a counselor can ask the chair for more time for a speaker. Yes, I think that should be stricken.
I'd also, I, I don't have a problem with that strike. If you, if we want to say that individuals may not yield their time, we could also put that in the section about public comment as well.
I don't know, I, I think we should do our best to be consistent, but I also don't want to give away any flexibility with regard to a speaker or the chair of council being able to, on the atypical circumstance where we might want to engage with a public comment person. It has happened in the past. So I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to take away some flexibility there as long as the chair is consistent in how, you know, in how you apply the three minutes. So I don't know, just, just generally thoughts there, because there have been times over the years where it did make sense not extort, not to double or triple their time, but to give them a little extra time to complete their thought, so.
And, and in that regard, I mean, I think sometimes when someone says something, I really think, oh my gosh, I really want to engage with that person and ask them to clarify something. So that gives them some additional time to speak and I think we should be able to engage. And I know from time to time, we've heard, oh, we don't typically answer because people ask specific questions of us. They'll say, I want to know about this, and then we just kind of move on to the next speaker. The other aspect of this, and it, it had to do with a previous perception out there that when we had contentious issues, you know, we did get some criticism that, okay, well, the chair kept giving extra time to the side that she favored and kept limiting the people that she didn't favor. So we definitely want to avoid that, that possibility entirely.
I'm, I'm a fan of flexibility, but I would prefer that each person stand on their own time and not have others. own time and not have others yielding more time to them.
Leslie, this is a quick question for you, because I know the rules of procedures are adopted by ordinance. Do we, if the council wanted to include an option to say if the majority of the council supports a change to any of this, does that need to be noted in here, or do they have the authority to do that?
So which section are you talking about here?
It's section L, but it kind of applies, I would even ask it as a larger conversation with the rules of procedure, if there are unique circumstances that may provide. I know that they can suspend, there is provision here about suspending the rules of procedure, but can they, by a majority of the three votes, change any of the provisions in the rules of procedure, such as in item L? If there was a special circumstance where they did want to extend a time for somebody for a particular reason? Or do they need to have a language in there saying, with the majority of the council vote, this provision may be amended during the meeting?
Okay, thank you for that. I would suggest adding the language. I think that makes it cleaner, because it is passed by ordinance. It would be best to have that language in this particular paragraph.
I, I agree, Leslie, with what you're saying. I also feel like the preferred way for a person to be able to get more time during open public comments is to supplement their oral comment with written testimony, which we all read. And some of our people testifying have done that and submitted a fairly lengthy memo to complement their, their oral comment. I don't know that we necessarily want to give them that guidance in, in this, but to me, that's the preferable way to go, because it is equitable.
Well, and that's certainly up to the council as a whole to decide how you, how you want to do that. I was just answering Kathleen's question, that if you wanted to have that flexibility, my suggestion is that the language be included in the rules of procedure. But thank you.
And I agree with both Kathleen and Leslie in that regard. It's better to state it explicitly, because otherwise it looks like an arbitrary, on-the-spot decision. So we should have a process for flexibility.
So would, so does the council want language in your rules of procedure to provide flexibility of the change? Any of the outlined terms?
I think it's written the way it is. I think the way it's written works in terms of flexibility standpoint.
Taking out the sentence that's being recommended does reduce the flexibility to change the times on this specifically?
Let me just say that as chair, I, and I'm sure that the rest of you would feel this way too, if you were chair, I have no problem with giving somebody additional time, but for the overall process, it is convoluted what will happen after that, because then you know that you've got to give extra time to quote unquote, "the other side" too. Or again, it will be perceived as being not, not equitable. So it just plain takes something that should be simple and makes it complicated. We don't need to do that.
So I feel like this has been in the rules of procedure for a really, really long time, and I think the chair has the, the authority in the meeting to control the meeting, how you see fit. And I, I just don't see a compelling reason why we would change it. You have the authority during the meeting, and this gives other counselors some flexibility, so.
Which is fine with me, but just know that, as for me, if someone requests additional time, the answer is no. And I've been practicing that and feel most comfortable in continuing that, for equity reasons.
So what I can do for today is I, we'll bring this back with some edits for you to discuss. I'll give you some time to think about this conversation as well. And if it's okay, and again, I'm not recommending this right now, it's not been voted on, but I will delete the sentence that the chair has requested, and then I'll add something in there about the majority of the council if they want to amend it. And then when we bring it back, we'll have further conversation and see if you've thought about it, does it make sense, do you want it deleted as well, and we can continue that conversation next week.
So when you say you remove it, is that, we use a strike through so we can see what was there?
Yes, and we'll highlight it for you too. So Counsel, that's all from, based on my review, there's a couple other things in here. I'm going to just follow up on, with staff, to make sure that we're in compliance with the rules of procedure. But is there any other items in the rules of procedure that council would like to discuss?
So if I could return to what I wanted to discuss earlier. So we've now seen it in a lot of different meetings and leaving us with no action taken, where we've had, you know, barely a quorum and a two-to-one vote, so nothing happened when there was a dissenting vote, or we had, in the interim before, we had five counselors, we had two-to-two votes, so no action was taken. And Robert's Rules, whether it applies or not, and it applies by our rules, but it shouldn't, because it, it really constrains how we conduct business and readdress issues that were never finalized. So what I would propose is that we specifically drop the reference to Robert Rules, other than general conduct of the meeting. But when it comes to reconsideration, it's, anyone should be able to make a motion, as long as it's not a completed action. And there, that would need to be addressed, obviously. But anyone should be able to say, let's go back to this topic, because it was never decided. And, and if there is a second, and then discussion, and a majority agreement to reconsider, that should be the process. It should, it'll make us more productive, more efficient, and it won't leave topics just kind of hanging by the wayside because of some either right or wrong interpretation of Robert Rules. It just doesn't apply here. The only last thing I'll say about this is, you know, as a judge, any, on a motion of any party to reconsider a ruling, I would do so. On my own motion, I would reconsider a motion, based on additional facts I've learned, additional research. I had that flexibility, and I think in all jurisdictions, judges do, with very limited procedural constraints. We should have the ability to reconsider things that are not final. And I think it would be a one-sentence addition to our procedure, to focus away from Robert's Rules the way we have.
And just for reference for counsel, there was two areas I heard Counselor Medvedje talk about. So the first one is in item six under quorum. It does talk about a majority of three counselors will come to the quorum, and it is a minimum number of votes required to take any action. So if there were only three counselors at a meeting, and it was a two-to-one, that would not pass. So I just wanted to call that language to your attention. And then towards the end, on page 12, I think this is 19, X1X, is that 19? Did I get that right? Is the reference, and it's under B, that's the reference to the Robert Rules of Order. It says, "In absence of special rules covering the needs of the council, or if an existing rule does not adequately cover the needs of the council, the latest edition of Robert's Rules of Order may be used as a reference, although strict adherence is not required." So I just wanted to call out the two language pieces, and Leslie, I don't know if I missed any.
Thank you, Kathleen and Counselor Medvedje. I think those are the ones, but I can certainly go through it as well to see, and I do know that there are other legislative bodies that have included specific rules, instead of using Robert's Rules for certain things. So I can certainly help Kathleen working on some suggested language to provide for the council to then discuss.
So do other people support that? I think it would help.
No, Counselor, I, I do not. I support the way B is written at this time, and here's why. Robert's Rules of Order is readily available, readily known, and this is not written in a strict way, because the last part of that is, although strict adherence is not required, so that's a judgment call. But Robert's Rules, as I see it, is not so much a constraining factor, I suppose one could say. It does tend to constrain some behavior that is quote, "out of order," but it is instead something that structures a meeting. And what a meeting needs, in my opinion, is the structure that Robert's Rules offers. So that's why I support this as written.
Okay, so I think we completely missed each other, so I completely concur with that, as far as, I'm just talking specifically about the ability to reconsider a topic that was never decided.
I would, I would think, and Leslie, maybe you can chime in here, that if, if there's a two-to-two vote, and there's a majority of counselors that want to bring it back up for reconsideration, that that would be possible. I can't imagine that there wouldn't be a constraint on the ability for the council to fully consider a policy item that neither passed nor failed based on a two-to-two vote, or even a three-to-one vote for that. But you can't, I take that back. A two-to-three, a two-to-one vote is not a vote, because you don't have, you have to have three. So for instances where we don't have a quorum or three or more votes to pass anything, can, are there constraints in bringing that back for reconsideration if you have a majority of counselors that want to readdress that policy issue? I can't imagine there would be.
Those are all very good questions, and I understand what you're saying. However, I would like the opportunity to look into those questions before I give you an answer right now. I will state that, and I just lost my train of thought, that, as I said, there are other, yeah, legislative bodies, I think, that have included that type of information there. The only thing that might cause an issues if, depending on what the action was, if there was some required public hearing that had to go along with that, that could maybe interfere with that. But I will definitely take a look into that, so that the council can have a discussion about that in a subsequent meeting, if that works.
To streamline that view, Leslie, and I, so I think Julie Olson has focused on the two areas where I think it would be low-hanging fruit to change, a two-to-two vote or a two-to-one vote. I think those are the two areas where we should be able to have flexibility with the majority to reconsider what really didn't happen.
Thank you both for your, thank you all for your comments on that.
Can I ask a question on quorum? Are there other jurisdictions, other councils or commissioners throughout the state that, that do something other than, in this case, three required out of the five? In other words, do some allow a, a two-to-one, because that's a majority of the quorum that was present?
We can take a look. I, not in cities or counties, I know other jurisdictions have done that. It's a majority of who's there, but we will, we can do a quick call around and find out what others are doing.
I would just be curious, one, and number two, it would be interesting, a discussion on the pros and the cons of that type of situation.
Does Counsel have any other questions or suggestions on the rules of procedure this morning? Hearing none. So I know what I would recommend, how we're moving forward, is to go through the board assignments today. I did get confirmation that there's no work session next Wednesday, so I would recommend that we continue with the policy discussion next Wednesday morning during that time, to make sure that we have adequate time to get through it. Lindsay will be prepared to provide a high-level summary of all the current policy conversations and items that are out there, and then, and you have that information as well, and then we can talk about your priorities within those policies, or if you want to add or delete any of them. Does that, is there any issues with that approach moving forward?
No, that sounds good. So that would be on the 15th?
Let me pull up my calendar.
Kathleen, I'm happy to be, to provide you with some information. I'm actually going to be out of the office on the 15th, so if you want to do it on the 15th, I can provide Kathleen that information, or we can do it on the 22nd.
So yes, it would be the morning of the 15th, Chair.
Without Lindsay's presence there?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So with that, do you need a couple minutes break before you start talking about board assignments?
Yes, and could we have the list of, of board assignments up before us, so we can be kind of thinking about that?
Yes, we will pull it up on the screen now. So do you want five minutes?
Sounds good.
All right, 11:29. All right, 11:29. Okay, welcome back, councillors. We do have, do we have everybody? Yes, we have everybody. So if we want, we can start at the top and move down, if that works for you all. So of course, Board of Health, you're all on the Board of Health. Same thing with the Industrial Revenue Bond Board, and the Board of Greater Clark Parks District, and Emergency Medical Services District Board One. So the first one that is open is the Emergency Medical Services District Board Number Two. This requires two councillors. And currently, Councillor Olsen and Chair Bowerman sit on this board.
What is the reference there to mayor?
The, I, I think some of the, what I'm being told is some of the cities, they rotate the mayor of who will be the representative on the board. So it's the cities that's within that Emergency Medical Services District Two. They rotate amongst those cities, and that mayor will be on the board.
I'm happy to continue in that role unless someone else is interested.
Okay, we'll keep Chair Bowerman. We'll need one more councillor. Councillor Olsen, do you want to continue on that board?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. C-TRAN. Currently, this is Councillor Lentz and Chair Bowerman.
I'd suggest that that be continued, as is, if Councillor Lentz has an important role on C-TRAN.
I'd support that. Anybody have any issues with that? Not hearing any? Okay, so we'll keep Councillor Lentz and Chair Bowerman. And then, Councillor Olsen, you are the alternate on that. Are you okay with remaining the alternate?
I'd be, if somebody else wants to be the alternate, that would be okay with me, otherwise.
Anybody else have a desire to be the alternate on C-TRAN? Okay, Councillor Rylander will be the alternate. RTC, this is the Chair plus two councillors. Currently, it's Councillor Lentz and Councillor Mevage.
I'm happy to.
I'm happy to continue. Okay, anybody else have a desire that wants to do that? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Do we need an alternate on that one? Yes, we do need an alternate on this one. We don't have one identified, and we've been kindly asked to identify an alternate. Councillor Rylander, thank you. Okay, the Vancouver Library Capital Facilities Area Board. This requires the Chair plus two councillors. It looks like we only have the Chair and one councillor right now. Councillor Mevage and the Chair. So we'll need one more to be on that board, and then also identify an alternate. I'd be happy to. Okay, so adding Councillor Lentz, alternate. Councillor Rylander. Clark County Reserve Officers Relief and Pension Board. This is Chair plus one. It's currently Chair Bowerman and Councillor Mevage. And we need an alternate. So, Councillor Mevage, still want to do that?
You know, my recollection is, we haven't met once, so yeah, I'm happy to.
I think you had to miss the last meeting.
And alternate, Councillor Rylander. Emergency Commissioner, this is just the Chair. Do we need an alternate on that? No, okay. Finance Committee is the Chair. IDA Clark County is the Chair. Law Library Board of Trustees is the Chair. Tell me if I missed one, that we need a backup. Mental Health Sales Tax, the Chair plus one. So currently, it's the Chair and Councillor Mevage, with Councillor Lentz as the alternate.
I will note that for many of these, with the rules of procedure change, they don't have to be Chair plus one. This is one of them, that it could be any two councillors.
I've just really just started with it.
I'm happy to continue as well, even though not required. That's good to know. I do have a question, though. Does the Chair, for sure or no, serve as the Chair of this committee?
One of the councillors will serve as the Chair of this committee. Historically, because under the prior rules of procedure, before we had the recent charter amendments, the rules of procedure required that where there was multiple councillors, that it would be Chair plus one or Chair plus two. And that has changed with the recent changes to the rules of procedure, given that we no longer have an at-large Chair. And so with the Mental Health Sales Tax, it would be determined by the group who, which of the two councillors would be the, the Chair of the group.
Oh, so it's not just any member of the Mental Health Sales Tax Committee?
No, it would be one of the two councillors, yes.
Okay.
Is that, is that identified in their bylaws?
That's.
Or is that just a practice?
I will review the bylaws and look. That's my recollection, but I will look. I think.
Thank you, Lindsay. I appreciate that.
A number of these bylaws may need to be updated, but that rules of procedure change.
Councillor Lentz, are you still willing to be the alternate?
I'm fine with that, unless somebody else would like to.
School Advisory Committee, is this still Chair plus one? And it's currently Chair Bowerman and Councillor Olsen. I think they just had their first meeting, didn't they, since COVID recently?
Yes.
Yeah, it's two meetings a year. You know, I've been on it for a very long time. I'm happy to stay on it, or I'm happy to let somebody else participate.
I think you did a good job on that one, Julie, and it would be nice to see you continue.
Happy to do it.
Area Agency on Aging and Disabilities of Southwest Washington. Looks like we have Councillor Lentz on there, and Chair Bowerman as the backup.
I enjoy this board, and I'm happy to continue. It also is, some changes in my schedule have made it harder for me to attend, so while I enjoy it, if there's somebody else interested, I'd be happy to, to, to share it, but if not, then I can also continue and try to work with the schedule stuff.
I've had some problems with their schedule as well, serving as the alternate, so I would really like to be replaced on that one.
What is the, what is the schedule?
It's, it's not, it's not a frequent meeting, but it is on a Friday afternoon. It's the, I'm looking for, I just lost it on the page.
It's not the fourth Thursday? Fourth Thursday from one to three? Or do they change the date?
It's on a Friday usually, no.
Mm-hmm.
It is, they are consistent with their meeting times, it's just that my Fridays are now busier, so that's why it's been, it's been hard. It's a two hour or less meeting. It's the Council of Governments for the Area Agency on Aging. It's a great group of people and an agency that does good work. I can continue to try to work out the schedule and do my best.
My Friday afternoons, or Fridays in general, are relatively open, so that wouldn't be an issue for me, and I am in the right age group to, to participate.
Okay, so I've heard Councillor Rylander volunteered to be the point, and for backup.
I, I could be the alternate.
Okay, thank you. CJC. Currently, this is Councillor Mevage with the backup as Councillor Lentz.
And I'm happy to continue, unless someone else really wants to dig in.
Okay, Councillor Mevage, Councillor Lentz, you want to maintain backup? Sure, unless somebody else? Okay, I'm assuming if I hear no, yes, we're gonna go with that. Audit Oversight Committee, I believe the Chair is on this one?
Mm-hmm.
I think we have our first meeting with them, with you, in next week or the following week. Do we need a backup on that one? I don't think so. Okay. And since this isn't stated that it has to be the Chair, historically it has been, I just want to make sure, is there any other councillors other than the Chair that would like to be on this committee? Okay, hearing none. The By State Coordination Committee? Don't have anybody on here.
Yeah, this, this one's almost defunct.
What is this committee?
The By State Committee was sort of the predecessor of the predecessor of the predecessor, looking at the I-5 bridge replacement.
I wondered, so is that, if we wanted to work hard on the third corridor, this would be a good group?
This group hasn't met in four or five years at least, and the state of Oregon kind of, I mean, I think both states are sort of seeing this as defunct. Nobody really wants to officially recognize that it is no longer active, but it's no longer active. So the Legislative Committees, the Joint Legislative Review Committee, that's responsible for the Oregon-Washington, looking at the I-5 bridge, that group potentially expanding its purview in the future, it's not within its current scope now, but those members, to the extent that they would want to look at future corridors, that would be the, the only active group that's fulfilling even a similar role at this point.
Okay, so we'll leave this blank. So we'll go ahead and leave that one blank, if for some reason they reconvene, we'll bring this back at a council time. Washington Investment Board. Currently, it's Councillor Lentz.
Hasn't met, at least in my memory, so with that schedule, I'd continue.
CREDC, the Quambira River Economic Development Council Directors.
This is the one where we voted to have Councillor Rylander? Because they needed an immediate appointment, or they were in violation of their own laws, rules?
So we have, I just want to make sure this is right, because we do have two CREDC ones. One is Directors, and one is the Executive Board. Is the Directors one, Chair Bowerman, that we needed to?
It, it would fill both spots there.
Both spots, okay.
Yeah, they, they are accustomed to having the same person do both.
Okay, and then we do need backups for these as well, and we've been asked to make sure we have backups for these positions, and we don't have anybody identified now.
I'd be happy to be backup.
So you don't want to be on the primary at all?
Primary what?
So for the councillors who will attend these meetings, for both CREDC ones, both for the Directors and Executive, it had both, it had you and then Councillor Rylander. So do we only want Councillor Rylander to be the person who attends these meetings, or do you want to also attend?
I would prefer to be backup.
Okay. Does anybody else want to be backup?
They only anticipate one.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, not hearing any, so that was for both of the CREDC ones. Councillor Rylander will be the primary, and Chair Bowerman will be the backup. Cowalich Tribal Foundation Clark County Fund. Currently, it's Councillor Olsen and Chair Bowerman.
Fine with me.
I think technically those all were like four-year terms anyway, so we would have to, we're left to deal with it after the first of the year.
I'll try to figure that out, too.
We have to deal with it after the first of the year, anyway, when I'm not here, but I think technically they're four-year terms.
Any alternate or backup for this one? Councillor Rylander? Or Councillor Mevage? He's been quiet for a while.
If you need an alternate, I'm happy to do it. I would like to get to know the tribe a little bit more.
Thank you. Discovery Clean Water Alliance. Councillor Olsen is the primary now.
Happy to stay.
Not hearing any other desire to add that backup for this one. We don't have one identified now.
If you need an alternate, I can be an alternate.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Mevage. Elder Justice Executive Board. This is Councillor Lentz with the alternate of Chair Bowerman.
It's another great board. I'm happy to continue, but also if somebody else would like a shot.
And I should probably relinquish my spot to someone else. I'm trying to think if I have attended that as alternate, and I don't believe there's been the need.
So any desire for a primary? Okay, Councillor Lentz will continue with it, and then alternate, please. Councillor Rylander is smiling at me, so I'll say that as a yes. Elections Canvasing Board. This is an in-person meeting. We don't have, it looks like we don't have anybody identified, and we really need to make sure we have somebody identified, as well as a backup.
What does the Elections Canvasing Board do or not to do? How often?
Certify elections.
Certify elections.
Well, I guess there was a conversation earlier, in the case of the recent action where they decertified a election observer, is that included in this, or is that separate? I know Councillor Mevage said in on that. I didn't know if it was under this auspices or something else.
Yeah, so that was basically by the grace. Yeah, so that was basically by the grace of the auditor that he added that process, and I think I was the alternate on the canvassing board, so he had invited the county council representative to come and participate. So it's not a normal process, it was something, he wanted to add a little bit more due process to his decision.
For what it's worth, in the outside of this in the real world, I am fairly involved with the subject of election integrity on various other platforms, so.
Would you like to be on the primary?
I would be open to assisting.
Okay. And for an alternate? Counselor Mevagee?
Well, thanks for volunteering. Sure, it is, it's an interesting position, especially during a contested election season.
And I believe this one actually takes some specialized training that you have to go through and that it's in-person, so we'll make sure that you get that training, thank you. Enting Community Homeless Organization, ECHO. This is the one that we meet with the city of Vancouver and our community partners. And I can't remember what the bylaws say, Lindsey, does it have to be the Chair plus one?
No, it was specifically crafted so that it could be any two.
I would like to relinquish my position, not because this is an unimportant committee, but because it is so important, and I'm not, I don't feel that I can give it justice at this point. Counselor Mevagee is the Chair and does a great job in that regard. But I think someone else would really, if you haven't done this before, maybe really benefit by participation there.
So I'm happy to continue, and you caught me, thank you for the kind words, and you caught me by surprise, but I'm happy to continue, I'm hoping someone else wants to jump at the chance.
So without getting in too deep, because I'm getting way up here too, not much air left to breathe, but I actually have just ordered several books on homelessness and several different, and I just had a call with somebody all even named who is actively involved in the arena looking for solutions. So I have a particular interest in trying to find ways to measure what we're doing and show that we're actually being effective, so, but I'm really on the bottom of the learning curve.
Well, was that, did you just volunteer to take Karen's position? Because it sounded like you did almost.
Sure.
Okay, Fairgrounds Liaison for Clark County, Counselor Olson is on this one.
Happy to remain.
Alternative or alternate? Counselor Olson, how often do they meet?
Once a month, once a month usually.
Anybody that's interested in doing a backup? If you say no now and Counselor Olson's out, I'll be making phone calls to everybody.
It's actually just, it's really, it's just, it's meeting with the Fairsite Management Group and listening to their business just each month and kind of getting updates on what's going on at the event center and what's happening with the air, and it's actually, it's just really an informational purpose only, and you don't have voting, you don't vote on anything, but just kind of keeping track of what's going on at the event center and fairgrounds.
Okay, the next one is the Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation. We have Counselor Lentz.
So I'm happy to continue on this one. It is a 7:30 in the morning meeting, which is super fun, but better when things are remote. For those who are interested in transportation policy, it is basically, it is the Portland, the metro version of our RTC. So if you are interested in regional transportation policy, including your discussions about a corridor, this would be a good group to have relationships with. I say that if someone else is interested, I'm happy, I've been on it since 2019, so I'm happy to share the wealth.
Not hearing anybody suggest, so we'll keep Counselor Lentz. Is there anybody that's interested in being an alternate?
Happy to be the alternate.
Thank you, Counselor. The next one is the Juvenile Justice Council.
So I have a continuing interest in this, it was my first love in the law, but now I'm seeing it's not a required assignment, so I'm wondering if we should pull some, if we should not have someone there. So if we want to keep supporting it, I'm happy to remain on it.
Okay, I'll keep you on there. Law Justice Council. And currently, this is Counselor Mevagee.
If you need an alternate, I'd be happy to do that.
And I'm happy to continue.
Law Enforcement and Firefighter Disability Board. This is Chair Berman currently. Chair Berman, do you have a desire to continue on that board?
Not particularly, but I'm willing to do it. We're meeting today and sometimes it's quarterly, sometimes it's monthly, it varies by the need.
Okay. I'm sorry, I just had thought, as we're kind of, now that we're almost at the end of this discussion, you know, the council, the new council will be doing this again in probably February of next year or early next year, so I'm wondering if we need to put people on where we have vacancies, we certainly obviously want to do that, but does it make sense for those of us who are on boards right now to just finish out the rest of this year? Unless we need to fill some vacant positions, because, you know, Counselor Rylander's new and certainly there's, with four of us, some open positions, but anyway, just a thought.
So if that was a move to expedite this, I am in favor of that, although I would really highly recommend that Mr. Rylander take the North County Emergency Medical Services Board, I mean, that's fully...
I think we've requested that, when we get to it, that is the point, so thank you for mentioning that. And the same thing applies to Workforce Development Council. He's already serving with them, and that would be, I think, two assignments, both for the board and the, or I think it's the Executive Board, and then the EBOCC as well.
So if there's no other recommended changes for the current assignments, there is one area, it's the Lower Columbia Fish Recovery Board, that we really need to have an alternate. And that's, we've been asked for that.
Yeah, and so, again, I think Counselor Rylander is an avid fisherman, but, and we really need an alternate, because we've had some forum issues. We are having hybrid meetings, I mean, the meetings were really hard to go to, because they, you know, they were pretty remote, from Stevenson to, you know, anyway, it's a pride, fairly wide-ranging jurisdiction, but we are doing hybrid meetings, but we really do need an alternate, because forums have been challenging.
Okay, Counselor Rylander will be the alternate. Okay, so with that, is the rest of the boards based on conversations? It sounds like everybody wants to stay where they're at, is there any other changes?
I would add that for workforce development, I'd be happy to be an alternate on that. With Counselor Rylander as the main guy.
On both of those?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other changes, Counsel?
No, but are you going to give us our individual lists?
Yes.
Got this correct?
We'll give you the updated list and we'll get the meetings onto your calendars.
Thank you.
We'll get that all taken care of. All right, look, we finished two minutes early. Granted, we didn't hit all the agenda items, but is there any other questions for today?
Which column is mine on that list? I can't see the top and I forgot which it is. I'm wanting to check the remaining ones that are my assignments. Oh, the middle, okay, great, may we scroll down to the bottom where we just said, keep on going as is?
Yeah, you're on Southwest Washington Clean Air Agency, Southwest Washington Convention and Visitors Bureau, and Washington State Association of Counties Board of Directors.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, I lost it already. The Southwest Washington Clean Air Agency, to my knowledge, has not met. So I certainly don't mind continuing with them, but I don't know anything really about them, and if they've met, I haven't known about it. The Convention and Visitors Bureau is a really good and interesting organization that I would like to pass off very much. It's not that it's labor-intensive, because it's not, but it's a pretty interesting group with what the tourism is here and that type of thing. If anyone is interested in that. And if not, I will continue. The Washington State Association of Counties? I did not know that I'm associated with that, yikes. So I have not been attending that. I bet it's been on my calendar and I just didn't realize it was something that I was assigned to, I'm so sorry. So WASAC needs good representation. I can do that, I just, I just didn't know that that was something that I was supposed to be doing, it never jelled with me.
It sounds like they probably haven't met a lot recently, but we'll ensure that it's on your calendar and that it's noted. And WASAC is, and WASAC is coming down, I sent you all an email yesterday or the day before, they're coming down the end of next month to do their check-in with the council. So you'll have an opportunity to meet with the leadership in WASAC. Is it the 23rd? Yeah, I think it's the 23rd, I'd have to confirm that, so you'll have an opportunity to talk to them at that time.
Is there an alternate for that one? That seems like an important one.
Counselor Lentz?
It's me, and they did meet in May. And I'm also elected by the WASAC Board as a board alternate, so I'm sort of doing double alternate duty. So Chair, I'd be happy to be the representative, or when I hear that a meeting's coming up, be sure that you know.
Well, I'm sure I'll be notified and I'll just know now that it applies to me, so if you would continue as the alternate, that'd be terrific.
And then Counselor Mevagee, you're still on the Legislative Steering Committee for WASAC, correct?
Yes, and I'm interested to continue, and I did, in one of my email forging, I saw that in a meeting you had discussed a request that I agreed to be on the, I think it was the Jail State Committee for WASAC. I don't know what's entailed with that, so maybe Lindsey, if you have some information, you could get to me on that to see how often they meet and what issues they're dealing with. I would be interested in looking into it, especially if it means more funding for our county jail. But I don't really, I missed that message from WASAC.
Yeah, sure, I can reach out to WASAC about that, and to clarify for everybody, I think what WASAC is planning on advocating for is operational dollars, given state DOC inmates and kind of that nexus, that's what they're looking at as opposed to capital construction, but given the conversations with the jail, it was something I wanted to raise, but I'll reach out to WASAC and get that information too.
Anything else for today?
Thank you.
All right, well, enjoy your afternoon and we'll see you next week. Thank you.
Bye-bye.